One nine two, and so we're all participating remotely. If our connections are lost during any portion of this hearing, we'll need to pause till the connection's restored. If we've had it happen on a couple of meetings. Oh, that's sorry, place is falling apart here. If you are leaving the meeting and won't be around for a vote, please let us know that you're, you'll be absent. Of course, we want to acknowledge we're on the traditional and seated territories of the Musquee and Squamish and Sibukuth people. And I want to thank them for their generosity for, for working together and building in partnership. As we build this great city together, also want to thank staff for all their work, especially in this really tough time that we're having these days. Deputy Clerk, City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry, we can't hear you.
Here.
Ah, we got you, thank you. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick is absent this evening, Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominato. Councillor Dominato. Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting, the hearing has quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you, clerks. Let's see now, so we're still in a period where we'll be doing virtual participation, so because of capacity limits within City Hall, speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should, speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Pan City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting. Any comments can be left in writing on our web form, vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And the link will also be tweeted. Speakers who have pre-registered and have presentations, we can help you navigate through your slides, just say next and we'll help there. And also, in respect of all genders, just remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, please avoid using gendered honorifics and refer to the person instead by first and last name, role, or title. Where in a public hearing, so we're a quasi judicial body this evening, meaning that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advisor and staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the application in principle, refuse the application, or refer the application to staff for further consideration. So we'll now continue to hear from the public for item five, which is the CD one amendment on four eight zero Broughton Street. For registered speakers that missed their turn yesterday and would still like to speak, you may call in and be added to the end of the list. If there are any additional speakers who wish to speak to council on this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code eight nine three two seven pound, and the numbers on the live stream and on Twitter. Okay, clerk, so we'll just jump right into the list here. Where the next speaker is Speaker number forty-two, Owen Hines.
Mayor Stewart, we do not seem to have Speaker number forty-two on the line at the moment.
Okay, let's try Speaker number forty-three, Sylla Hines.
I'm just checking, Mayor Stewart, it appears Speaker number forty-three is not on the line at the moment.
Okay, we can try Speaker forty-four, Bonnie Dean Stobie.
No to forty-four.
Great, forty-five is Rochelle Pauls, Speaker number forty-five, Rochelle Pauls.
Yes, the speaker is on the line.
Great, thanks very much. Hi, Speaker.
Hi there.
Hi there, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, I don't have a lot to say, and someone made most of my points yesterday, to be honest, which was quite convenient for me. Just to give some context, I live in the West End and I have for a long time. I have two children who currently attend Lord Roberts Elementary, my oldest is going into grade seven next year, and has been at Roberts since kindergarten, so I've been involved in the parent community in this neighborhood for quite some time. One of the reasons I signed up to speak today, and I realized the school was happening regardless, but just to give some context, is that the parents of this neighborhood have been advocating for this school to be built, and for more amenities and more community development for a long time. It was pretty distressing for me to hear people say yesterday that we don't need a school, or we should build the school somewhere else. I'm not sure if people are aware, but all the schools in the neighborhood and in all the other neighborhoods close by are full. That means if your child doesn't win the kindergarten lottery for a space in a neighborhood school, you're not only taking your child to another neighborhood, but it's a neighborhood that isn't close, and likely isn't within walking distance, and maybe not even cycling distance for younger children. Many families here do not drive cars and do not have cars, and face the prospect of making a trip to and from a school a lengthy distance away by public transit every day. When the hydro proposal came up a few years ago, it was met by a lot of skepticism by the parents in this community. There was a lot of lack of trust in both hydro and in the Vancouver School Board that promises would be met, and that the needs of the community would be taken into account. And again, the reason I signed up to speak today is that I, I felt like there was a huge segment of our community that hasn't been represented in the comments so far. I'm someone who went to all of the information and consultation sessions and devoted a lot of my time to involvement, because this neighborhood is important to me. And I also believe strongly that how we treat and plan for our children says a lot about who we are as a community, and about families, and then about people. I can tell you that many, many parents raise the fact that this presented an outstanding opportunity to provide for more than just the school, and to create, and to create infrastructure our community desperately needed. Childcare spaces in this neighborhood are in desperately short supply, my kids are now eight and twelve. I never successfully found a group daycare space for either of them in this neighborhood. I started getting calls from waitlists shortly before each of them started kindergarten. There are currently VSOC daycares who prioritize children living in Coal Harbour, Yaeltown, and downtown neighborhoods. There's nothing similar for West End families, and so we rarely get spaces in any of those daycares. Then you get to repeat this process when your child starts school, and you can't find before and after school care. We were fortunate and got a spot for our oldest after only two years on the waitlist, but I'm told the lists are longer now. The other issue I wanted to speak to is the lack of secure rental housing in this neighborhood, which is also in desperately short supply. Affordability is important, but so is the very existence of that housing. So many people in this neighborhood rely on renting individually owned condos and are at the mercy of owners, who may suddenly want to renovate or have a family member move in, or more frequently, a homeowner who lies about either of those things to evict a family who has lived there as long-term tenants, thus paying lower than market rent so they can replace them with someone who pays much more. These aren't assets, these are family homes that people are being displaced from. Everyone I know here has either had that happen to them or knows someone who has. Living in fear of eviction, especially given how stressful it is to find new housing right now, creates a lot of anxiety, especially for families with young children. I understand that people are concerned about traffic, and rightly so. I'm concerned about traffic all the time as someone who walks and cycles frequently in this neighborhood. Traffic in the city is a problem, which is why I understand that the city is studying ways to address it through things like mobility pricing. However, that's a huge problem the city is facing, and I find it really hard to believe that one discreet project will have major overall impact on traffic patterns in the city, and it sounds like the city's traffic engineers came to the same conclusion, frankly. I think this proposal actually will provide a net benefit to traffic. Providing housing close to where people work means that fewer people will need to commute into the city from the suburbs. Right now, children living in Coal Harbour have to cross many major roads, including Georgia, Hastings, Pender, to get to school in the West End. Parents with cars may be more inclined to drive them because of this. Enabling Coal Harbour children to go to school in their own area would reduce these car trips. What I've heard and why I decided to speak today is a distressing level of prioritizing the needs of individuals. Individuals who want to preserve their views, who don't want more people living in their neighborhood. And I would ask the city to focus on who will benefit this, from this, the people who desperately want secure rental housing, to stay in the neighborhood they've always lived in. The people who want their five-year-old to go to kindergarten close to home without having to win a lottery for the privilege. The people that need before and after school care close by so that they can continue to work and support their family. And the people who believe that our communities are built for people, not views, and that's pretty much all I had to say.
Thank you so much, you do have questions from councillors. Councillor Fry, you're up first, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Speaker, I, you mentioned you had an eight and a twelve-year-old, so I appreciate you taking time away from family.
Thank you, I'm a single parent too, so it's not super easy.
Well, thank your eight and twelve-year-old for us then, for you taking the time, giving us the time with you. We've, we've heard from a, a number of speakers suggesting that we should sort of put the brakes on and wait, and do additional work on, on traffic analysis, and, and you acknowledge the traffic situation. But I understand that, that this is part of a critical sort of swing space approach to the demolition of Lord Roberts Annex. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on what, what waiting on this and delaying the timeline might look like as far as that demolition, swing space, access, you know, overcrowded schools?
I guess it's frustrating, oh, sorry, yeah, so I guess it's frustrating for us who have been involved in this for a long time. The Lord Roberts PAC, which I've been involved in for years, has been advocating for this school in Coal Harbour to be built as long as I can remember, from long before the hydro proposal was on the table. We've known about this desperate need for school in our community, so it's frustrating for me to hear people say, well, let's slow down and let's not rush this, because this isn't rushing it, this has been, from our view, proceeding at an incredibly glacial pace. In terms of the, using it as a swing space, while the annex is being rebuilt, our understanding, and again, this is where some of that lack of trust with the school board comes into things, is that the annex will eventually be rebuilt. For now, the Coal Harbour school will provide additional spaces for those children, but that we need all the space that we can get. For years, for example, Lord Roberts was, was used as an overflow school for Elsie Roy. And so kids that couldn't get into Elsie Roy in Yaeltown would get a kindergarten space at Lord Roberts, which isn't ideal when you're in Yaeltown, but it doesn't mean commuting across the city, we haven't been able to do that in years. So, you know, there's a desperate need for those spaces, they will be filled, and yes, it will be temporarily a swing space, but, you know, I think the goal and the hope of the people in this neighborhood is eventually there'll be a fully functioning school at Roberts, at Roberts Annex and in Coal Harbour.
Appreciate that, and we all know that there's a lot of traffic for kids to, that they have to cross at Georgia and at Pender. Any thoughts on how we might make that a safer passage for kids?
Yeah, and I mean, it was mentioned before, and parents of this neighborhood have been saying this for years, we need longer light times on those streets. That's the biggest issue right now, is that, you know, we can cross those streets, but right now, if you're a slow walker, and this isn't just children that I'm talking about here, we're also talking about people with, with mobility needs, people who may be elderly and can't walk at as brisk of a pace. Those lights do not, the red lights do not last long enough, the walk time is not long enough. And I think those streets can be crossed safely, but right now, they're, they're set up for cars, not pedestrians, is, is, you know, is what happens. And, and pedestrians' needs are subordinate to, to traffic needs, unfortunately. So I think what we're asking for is that we take a look at how we can prioritize people who are walking and cycling, and let us get around better without making car flow the be-all and end-all of what we're looking for here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, oh, said it, okay, Councillor Fry, Councillor Dominato also has questions for you, Councillor Dominato, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thanks for calling in this evening, and appreciate and empathize with you around your description of childcare. Been through that, went through that with my kids, it was extremely stressful being on a myriad of waitlists, I had like spreadsheets, it was crazy. So I, I do want to hone in on a couple of things you touched on. I appreciate the question earlier about transportation and, and the extended light times at those crossings. And we heard some residents speak about other concerns around safety, around the marina and the seawall. Is that a concern for you as a parent?
Honestly, I have parent, I have a lot of friends with children who attend Elsie Roy, which is also located right next to the waterfront. I know families who attend Falls Creek Elementary, which is also located next to the waterfront. My kids, as well as many other neighborhood kids, have been playing at the Coal Harbour Playground in that area, and going to programs at the Coal Harbour Community Centre, since they were babies and toddlers. And that's, it's never been something that we see, we've seen as a concern.
Yeah, thanks for that. And then, just following up on a point I think you were making was around, do you see, you talked about sort of the, you know, individuals versus the larger public good, and can you see the opportunity here of that, of rental housing and childcare and a school being kind of co-located as, as a community benefit potentially, is that, and that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, and that's something that came over, up over and over again in the consultation sessions with BC Hydro, was that's what people wanted. They didn't want just like a, you know, two-story school with like nothing but wasted space above it there. We want something that's going to provide, we saw this as a golden opportunity to actually build something that's going to benefit the community. We see so much construction in our neighborhood, I just had a condo development go up down the street from me, I live on Jervis. Massive tower at the corner of Jervis and Davie, and I'm certainly not anti-development, but it is frustrating for those of us in the neighborhood who then look at the units in that building and they're all over two million dollars, which is not something the average income in the West End can support. So for us, you know, to have a building that's actually going to benefit the community, to have childcare spaces, like that we desperately, desperately need, going along with that school. I, I strongly feel, and I know there are many other parents, and many of them probably would say this if they had the time or the inclination, who feel like it would be a huge missed opportunity to not build as much as we possibly can in order to benefit the community right now.
Thanks for clarifying that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks so much, Councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Great, thanks, thanks so much for coming to speak to us tonight, really appreciate it. So you, you're at Lord Roberts, did you, or what, what was your participation in, and how did you, how did you feel the results were of the School Street Pilot Project that took place at Lord Roberts?
It was great, I don't have, actually, I can't say anything that hasn't already been said about it, it was an amazing project. So my kids, my oldest is twelve and in grade six, so my kids walk to school independently every day, and, because I start work earlier than that. And, you know, for me, every little, little, every little thing that contributes to their safety is really important to me. And they would come home every day and say, it was so great, we had space to kind of arrive at the school and play. And that street has particular issues, because it's narrow, and people dropping off their kids park illegally on the wrong side of the road. And so cars trying to navigate that street during drop-off and pickup time, it gets, it gets really dangerous. A lot of us have been afraid for years about something that could happen on that street during drop-off and pickup time. So just to have that relief that our kids can cross that, that street safely, because no one's trying to weave in behind, no one's trying to back out of spaces. It took a lot of pressure, and, and it was a load off our minds, and the kids loved it, they loved being able to walk on the street. It felt like this really festive thing that they got to do, they would come home and talk about it every day. And then again, it was one of those things that builds community, it brings people together.
Okay, and, and there's been a number of other speakers to this particular public hearing item that have raised issues around car traffic, kids getting dropped off, picked up, that kind of thing. Did you find that that program actually diminished that, and if there was something that, similar to that, that was put in place on a more permanent basis, that that would in fact diminish the use of cars by parents?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, like people, the traffic seemed, and I know Lucy spoke more eloquently about this than me yesterday, because she knows the facts and the figures better than I do, but we didn't see increased traffic volume on the surrounding streets, it wasn't an issue. What we noticed was that fewer people were arriving by car. And I should say that we also already have a high percentage of people who do arrive by, by sight, by bike, and by scooter, and by walking, just because of the nature of our neighborhood, but, you know, the more we can encourage more people. And I feel like the Coal Harbour School will likely be the same way, it's a compact neighborhood, it's probably not going to have a lot of car traffic, much like our school does, because most kids going to that school will be from the neighborhood.
Okay, I appreciate your answers, thanks so much.
No problem.
Thank you, and that's it for questions, really appreciate you calling in this evening, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, just let you know, we are coming up to Speaker forty-seven of seventy-nine. So we do have till ten o'clock this evening, just keep, keep that in mind. We have a Speaker number forty-seven next, Leilani Ailey.
Mayor Stewart, I'm just checking, no, not on the line, Speaker forty-seven.
Speaker number forty-eight, Dana Leem.
And the same, not on the line.
Okay, thanks, Jacob Codgman, Codgman.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, we can, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Can I just get a point clarification, because I feel like again, the, the school issue is settled, I don't need to speak to that?
That's right, yes, the school has been decided and approved, we're just deciding this evening on, on the, the extra height for childcare and social housing. And, and thanks for raising that, because that's actually the limit of what we're supposed to be talking to this evening, although any issue connected to that would be fine, so please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm fully in favor of increasing the ceiling, I think a lot of the, I listened all last night in the hopes that I would be able to speak yesterday, I think there've been a lot of good points you've already covered. I think I just want to reiterate the fact that there's a significant, two significant crises that can be settled just with this, passing this motion today. One is, there's a complete lack of childcare spaces in the city, and it is detrimentally affecting all the families in a number of ways, aside from the fact that lack of affordability for childcare, some places can't even get spaces. My neighbor's across the way, their caregiver had to shut down her in-home childcare facility because she developed lung cancer, leaving them in the lurch, hoping that they can find something in September. And similar to, I know Ms. Paul's, her children are in the same after-care program, but we were fortunate enough by fluke to get into a licensed daycare facility. So anything that increases the number of childcare facilities, spaces, i- in my opinion, is great. And the same thing with affordable housing, we have a lack of affordable housing in the city, and anything that's just going to increase how many, how, how many units, just in general, whether or not it's social housing or just affordable housing of any kind, is just going to add to the vibrancy and cloth of a community. Now, unfortunately, the way Vancouver is built, is we are up against the Pacific Ocean, so the only place to really build is up. And to me, this is only an extension of, I believe, two, what, eight additional floors, I forget the exact number, but I'm speaking in favor of the motion, because I think it's one of the things that are going to solve two key, two key issues that have been, I don't want to say neglected, they've been raised time and time again, but here's a viable, a viable solution to both the lack of childcare and the lack of affordable housing.
Okay, thank you very much, Speaker. I have no questions for you, or the council has no questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker, but thank you for calling in. We have Speaker number, thank you, Speaker number fifty, Emmett Anthony Das.
Mayor Stewart, Speaker fifty is not on the line.
Okay, thanks, we'll move to fifty-two, Kathy Land, Landaverry.
No.
Okay, thank you, Leroy Summer, Speaker number fifty-three, Leroy Summer.
Nope.
Okay, thanks, fifty-five, Sarah Gordon, Speaker number fifty-five, Sarah Gordon.
No.
Okay, fifty-six is withdrawn, fifty-seven, Mark Archtemichuk.
No.
Okay, thanks. Fifty-eight, Speaker fifty-eight is Jasmine Pena.
Yes.
Great.
Hi there, good evening, my name is Jasmine Pena, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I think the Speaker make it quick, purpose of my call is to voice my support for the expansion. I've lived in the West End since twenty seventeen, I have two daughters, ages three and one. Families are choosing to stay downtown for various reasons, trading off of living in smaller footprint for proximity to amenities such as parks, playgrounds, schools, and workplace. My personal experience in finding early childcare for my oldest required one and a half years prior to getting a spot at a licensed facility, and a full, almost four years since I was pregnant with her before she got in a, a three to five spot. So I, I would consider myself very lucky, in fact, that, A, I had the opportunity to take an extended parental leave, and, and as well as be able to win that lottery. And I think that's really the point that I want to drive, is that, you know, the experience of education now is feeling, especially in getting a school and, 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 I guess, a spot at school, is winning the lottery. And I know this isn't isolated to the downtown core, but that, you know, this public service, which we think should be provided, I think, to all children, is becoming more competitive and highly selective. So that's something that I want to drive, and, you know, perhaps, maybe my children may be able to benefit from, from the future of the school, so that's really why I want to voice my support for this expansion, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much for calling in tonight, just checking, and I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move to the next speaker, thanks. Let's go, we have Speaker number fifty-nine, Michael Lee. Clerks, do we have Michael Lee on the line?
No.
Okay, thanks, we have sixty-two, Kenna McKenzie.
Yes.
Okay, great, Speaker number sixty-two, Kenna McKenzie, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you, hi, my name is Kenna McKenzie, I'm a resident of the West End, I have two children, both have gone to Lord Roberts, so are now presently in Lord, in going to King George. I'm also on the PAC at King George, and have also been on the PAC at Lord Roberts. I have personally experienced the overcrowding at Lord Roberts. So I understand this meeting is about the addition of social non-market housing and the amendment of the height at four eighty Broughton. I just want to make a few comments in regards to some concerns the opposition to this school has brought up. Traffic is a problem throughout the Lower Mainland, the previous Speaker Lucy gave an excellent answer to this issue, and I fully agree with her assessment on how to reduce the traffic and the safety for the street crossings. The longer life would be a great solution now, as children have to cross out of the Coal Harbour homes to go to the school in the West End. The opposition to this school has been well organized by some residents. Fear of change is always difficult to manage. However, the benefits of seeing happy children, a vibrant school, and a diverse new group of people moving into the neighborhood would bring rewards than, more than anything to this area. To the actual amendment, forty more social housing units would be better. It would create a larger community in the building, and also creates more room for families while still having single units, which are also important as well. Giving families a diverse social and economic backgrounds, the opportunity to live and have their children go to school where they live. Because of these added units, they must raise the height of the building. It is a minimal amount of height, and given the design of the building, it really keeps the view coons open. Sightlines will be open and minimally impacted. I would just like to thank you for your time, and I really am looking forward to this school being built, and it going ahead without any more delays.
Thank you so much, I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker, we have Speaker number sixty-three, Kathy Poole. Speaker sixty-three, Kathy Poole.
Yes, sixty-three is there, yes.
Hi there.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Sure can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you, my name is Kathy Poole, I'm the Vice President of Children and Youth Services for the YMCA of Greater Vancouver. The YMCA is in support of the recommendation. As the intended operator of the project's school age program, the YMCA looks forward to the opportunity to welcome more families and children into our childcare community. Children and families with low income, living in the building, would have a stronger start in life if they could access both school and school age care on-site, while also benefiting from proximity to the community center and other needed amenities. The YMCA currently operates two life- The YMCA currently operates two licensed before and after school care programs in the downtown community. With these programs reaching capacity come fall twenty twenty-one, it's clear that there's a growing need for quality and accessible school age childcare downtown. We also have an established early years childcare president in, presence in the downtown area. These childcare centers have extensive waitlists suggesting that those families currently registered in these programs, as well as those on our waitlist, will need school age care in the coming years. Although the pandemic in B C is trending in the right direction, the impact it has had on families will be felt for a long time. And if our experience during this time has demonstrated anything, it's that childcare services will be in great demand as families begin to recover from the pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, but appreciate you, uh, phoning in this evening. And, uh, we are going to move to the next speaker. Uh, we have next on the list, uh, Rajiv, uh, Sil- Silgado, speaker number sixty-six.
Yes, hello, I'm here.
Hi there. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Um, I am an actual resident of Coal Harbour along with my wife and daughter. Um, we are directly affected by this proposal and are against it. Let me explain why. We're not against social or subsidized housing, and we're not against schools. There are already three large social housing complexes within a three-block radius of this project, and, you know, we get along fine. We're a healthy, integrated community. What we are against is the following. As you're all likely aware, downtown Vancouver, including Coal Harbour, is among the top five densely populated areas in North America, not just in B C or in Canada, North America. Currently, as I understand it, the population density in downtown, including Coal Harbour, is more than three times that of the city of Vancouver, and more than eighteen times the population density in the metro Vancouver area. This wide gap is a result of continuing rapid development in an already densely inhabited area. These cycles of development and population surges, especially in populous areas, challenge all urban infrastructure systems and public services. In addition, further development and population increase in such areas can lead to other social issues. We don't want those. You won't want those either. Furthermore, uh, building projects in the downtown area in general, and particularly this large building on a small piece of land in Coal Harbour with a very limited road network in a cul-de-sac junction create heavy traffic and unbearable congestion, which will adversely impact our lives and health and, and those of all the people in the area. As things stand, Hastings, Spender, Jervis, Broughton, and Cordova are systematically at complete gridlock during the heavy traffic patterns associated with high demand on the Lionsgate Bridge and/or congestion on Georgia. Those would be the same timeframes as school drop-off and pickup. How can one put a school in a region that cannot currently manage traffic blockages? And one where often frustrated drivers are to be found almost daily. This cul-de-sac space, if you don't know it, has only one exit that already supports two marinas, a primary tower garage entrance and exit, a community center entrance, insurance playground, and a highly used local park. It cannot tolerate a further sixty residences than a three hundred forty student school. Before I retired, I worked at one eighty, eleven eighty-eight West Hastings. That is just over three blocks from where we lived. Most afternoons, as I walked home, I would reach our apartment much before any of the cars that I had noticed upon leaving my office. In fact, on most days, I would be on our balcony drinking a glass of water as those frustrated motors finally trickled past us. We do not want to add to all this existing congestion. Thirdly, as we've all experienced this year, B C is going through a record heat wave. While temperatures are at all-time records in twenty twenty-one, large and growing numbers of forest fires with the accompanying smoke and smog have become an annual phenomenon in our city and in our neighborhood. Nine hundred and seventeen new car trips a day through a narrow and completely gridlocked area will only add to the greenhouse gas effect. Do we really want more carbon emissions? Doesn't this violate the city's climate emergency plan? And additionally, isn't it also in total contrast to achieving the goals of the city's transportation plan? Please give regard to comments and letters from residents of the area over those who have absolutely no stake whatsoever in the project. It is easy to support a superficially well-intended project from afar when it doesn't affect you in any manner, financially or in the quality of your life. We all live in and love this city. Hence, this project resulting in high traffic, air pollution, higher carbon emissions, and safety issues is against all of our collective principles. It flies in the face of principles and philosophy underlying social help. We think it should be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for calling in this evening. I don't, uh, see any, uh, questions for you from, uh, council, just checking here. Nope. Uh, so thanks. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Uh, we have sixty-seven, uh, Nal Shah. Nal Shah, speaker number sixty-seven.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi there. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and respected members of the council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to, um, express my views. Uh, as you might have seen, uh, this project has generated a lot of publicity. Um, most of the residents, up to ninety-nine percent, are opposing this. So there has to be some reason for the opposition. It just can't be that you're blocking views or anything silly like that. The biggest, um, worry that residents have, uh, which was, uh, clearly, uh, mentioned by the speaker before, is the increase in traffic load. Uh, we, the residents were denied any TAM study. Uh, what was this passed on? The early objections were not considered. I am not even sure how this went ahead without a detailed traffic study. The plan was made twenty, twenty-five years ago, and it was very novel and thought then, but at that point, there was not a huge change in life brought about by either a global pandemic or global warming. Uh, all members of the city council have experienced this, as have all red people, and this plan should be reconsidered in light of this current new situation. By forcing families to live in cramped tiny apartments or by creating congested polluted areas in the city is surely not what the city envisages as its development goal. Um, I don't understand how the climate, um, emergency plan for the city or the green city plan are a part of this. Uh, my one question is, you've heard a lot said about the traffic. Is there one walkable path or bike lane that was proposed to walk or bike to school for this area? Uh, again, it's a cul-de-sac with very limited, um, road width. Uh, so how would these idling cars dropping off, uh, the sto- um, manage that? It would just, you know, lead to an increase in temperature. So my request is, please, before this increase in height is considered or even the project goes ahead, uh, please, is it possible to get a detailed traffic study released to the public so that at least we're aware of what we will be up against? And I would just like to say that during these past few days in this record brad- brading heat, if anybody walked along the waterfront from Canada Place to the Western Hotel, every building was literally radiating heat up till ten P M. The only coal area was this small garden and this parking lot. This was the only last remaining open space in Coal Harbour. So it is my humble request, please stop and think how this space can be put to a better use. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, there are no questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks. Uh, we have speaker number, uh, sixty-nine, Howard Pontius. Speaker number sixty-nine, Howard Pontius.
Mayor Stewart, uh, speaker sixty-nine is not on the line.
Okay, let's try speaker number seventeen, Michelle Paymar.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, speaker number seventy, Michelle Paymar.
Hello, um, this is Michelle Paymar, and we live on Pender Street and across the street from the proposed development. And I won't take your time reiterating what so many of my neighbors have already said so eloquently about density, traffic, safety, and a lot of other very basic questions about the project. As you already heard, gridlock in our area is untenable. As you already know, there is no viable traffic plan. I would also like to take this time to address an issue, the issue that is apparently at hand, which is whether to approve the changes in the development proposal regarding the height and density of the project. Uh, yesterday, a gentleman from the planning board, I believe, referred to the impact of the height addition as minimal, as the additional height would only affect two floors. Well, we happen to own a unit on one of those two floors, and I would like to point out that there are two floors on five buildings whose views will be impacted. That's a lot of people, and I don't think any of us would agree that the impact will be minimal. Our views will be largely obliterated. When we bought our condo in two thousand and four, our realtor had made us aware of the plans for the school and social housing. We researched the development to make sure that the view from the unit we were hoping to buy would not be impacted. Based on the height of the proposed building, we understood that there would be an impact, but one we could live with. And we thought a school and housing would add to the vibrancy of the neighborhood. We put our life savings into our condo, based on a set of assumptions that you are now about to vote to undo. The added height may seem like a small thing. I can see how you might think that adding more units is just a, a little detail. But given already the tremendous community opposition to this proposal as a whole, I would urge you first of all to take some time to at least give us the courtesy of a proper traffic study. Um, and more importantly, to please slow down and take a few more months to think about this, and don't approve the plan for additional height and density in the meantime. And if you want to know, I would like to extend an invitation to the mayor and to every member of council, now that we're getting to the other side of COVID, to please come spend some time in our unit during rush hour, and you will see for yourselves exactly what is going on. The other thing is that for all of these years, my office, my, 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 my home office is looking at the corner of Pender and Broughton. I would estimate conservatively that there are between five and ten accidents a year on that corner. So in the last fifteen years, I mean, that is, uh, how many accidents is that? Please, please, please reconsider that corner. I don't know what the problem is with it. Perhaps it's the angle, the way the sun hits, but don't put everybody in harm's way without really paying attention to that, that intersection of Broughton and Pender. It, it's treacherous. Um, please check with the, with I T B C and the police, and you'll, you'll find out that what I'm saying is true. Anyway, thank you so much for, um, your time, and please vote no on the additional height and density. But more importantly, please reconsider the need for this project at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so going to move on to the next speaker. Uh, council, we're next, uh, seventy-two, Richard Wu. Seventy-two, Richard Wu?
Yes, I'm online. Everybody can hear me?
We sure can. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, well, I've been sitting through since last night, and, uh, what I observe is that the lot of issues, um, raised by the people who have objection to this project, uh, don't seem to be addressed at all, and very little questions from the councils, council members. And I'm, I'm really surprised and certainly maybe disappointed. I'm certainly, um, go against this project for a number of reasons, and, uh, that a lot of people already mentioned. So I've been living in Coal Harbour only for three years, and I don't drive. My wife don't drive, is, uh, she cannot drive. So we're living in this area for three years. Um, let me just give you my personal observations. Because we don't drive, so that's why we, we have to go out, walk, uh, all the time. So each time when we walk across up here from West Pender across the, the, um, o- west Georgia, it's very steep, and my wife couldn't walk a- at the way that she normally does. So we are very slow. And, uh, and, and anytime we turn on the traffic light, uh, uh, truck lights is ready for us to cross, we kind of try to do our best. What I'm trying to say is that the dizzy slope is hard for anybody to bike. Not to mention the fact that if you have kids on the bike, I don't think it's getting impossible to do that. Not to mention that the downhill is also very dangerous. Not to mention the fact in winter time, very slippery in the rainy ti- rainy seasons, it's absolutely impossible. So for the, any kind of people, or family, or kids, that coming from the other side of the west Georgia, all the way down to the, um, to the marina. So that's kind of a safety issue. Now, I understand that some people say, well, let's just, uh, uh, increase the, um, trap, the, uh, the lights on, you know, longer time. That leads to another question, the, uh, issue. The issue is, based on my personal observation, because walk, uh, we walk all the time and in, in this neighborhood. And I observed in the rush hour, even during the pandemic time, lots of cars. And lots of cars coming across the, uh, through the, uh, West Pender and the west Georgia. And I noticed that a lot of cars, they did running to, uh, you know, the, the, the grid block in the, uh, on, on the west Georgia, they're kind of a tour and, uh, w- and go over the west Georgia. So the whole, these two streets in that neighborhood is almost sometimes could be like a parking lot. So I imagine that with the amount of traffic that resulting from this, uh, the, uh, uh, in the people, uh, you know, study in, in the living in that, that new site, I would imagine that it's, the traffic is gonna, is gonna be nightmare. So what's gonna, what's gonna happen to the neighborhood? Well, certainly, I cannot walk outside anymore because I smell a lot of gas, even these days. I stay away from there. And, but more concerned is about the climate change. I noticed that the Vancouver City introduced this, uh, emergency, um, uh, you know, carbon emission plan. And, uh, and when I sift through the, um, the engineering report from the, uh, developers and the planning staff, and I couldn't see any way to measure the column footprints as a result of this, uh, traffic. That, that kind of situation. I don't see that. Now personally, I'm trained by engineering, so I'm always detail oriented and, and look at, and what are the things that, you know, did those kind of reports come up with? So I agree with a lot of people saying that the proper, um, investigation exam and proper engineering work needs to be taken place and share that kind of details with the communities, since we have so many people have a lot of concern about that and appears to be all these concerns nowhere addressed. And, uh, in, in, in the, you know, last night and tonight's. And I also, this is also kind of a pattern that I observed in March twenty-second. I was also the speaker on March twenty-second. I was almost like, uh, oh, you want to speak? Talk. And, uh, afterwards, nobody cared about what you talk about. So when I asked him for the engineering reports, there's no engineering reports. At the end of the session, and I got a two-page PDF document, and say, this is come up with, and, uh, no problem with the, uh, traffic. But personally, I absorb those kind of problems every single day, because we don't drive. We walk. We don't bike either. Okay? In living in that neighborhood for three years. The other thing I want to notice that and, and a lot of people said it was, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, the, uh, close to all, all the, you know, amenities. And when we do shopping, I, I shopping quite a few, you know, retailing store around the neighborhood, but I realize the price is not that cheap. And we know effort, we, we, you know, we, we, we're living very here in a sweet way. So we actually stay away from those, uh, the retail stores in, in the, in, in that neighborhood. Instead, we will walk across the west Georgia.
Uh, we're, we're at the five-minute limit, so I just want to thank you so much for calling in this evening. There are no questions for you, so, uh, just thank you for your participation, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again for calling in. Uh, council, we're moving on to speaker number seventy-three, Wendy Chow.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Wendy Chow. I'm the Director of Operations at the Vancouver Society of Children's Centers. We at the Vancouver Society of Children's Centers enthusiastically support this development and the combination of the elementary school, the childcare center, and the social housing for families. At the Vancouver Society of Children's Centers, we're a nonprofit organization, and we were created in nineteen ninety-four in collaboration with the city of Vancouver as part of the civic childcare strategy. Our mandate is to design, develop, and operate high-quality licensed childcare services in partnership with the community and government. We currently operate sixteen centers, offering thirty-four childcare programs with seven hundred and seventy-eight licensed childcare spaces in the downtown peninsula and its adjacent communities, some of which are integrated in complexes which include social housing for families and seniors and rental housing, as well as elementary schools. Within the Coal Har- neighbor, Coal Harbour neighborhood, we currently provide childcare services at four loca- we currently provide childcare services at four locations and therefore have a deep appreciation for the urgent need for services in this area. Families struggle to find affordable housing, access to quality licensed childcare, and schools for elementary-age children. Our waiting list in the downtown area for licensed childcare for infants, toddlers, and three-to-five-year-olds continues to be well over 2,000 children, with families contacting us daily in desperate need for care. Further, families enrolled in our three-to-five programmes living in the Coal Harbour and West End communities are in urgent need of an elementary school, which is within walking distance of their homes. At VSOC, many of our employers, like, like many of, sorry, at VSOC, like many other employers and essential services in Vancouver, our workforce is primarily women with young families. Our employees struggle to find affordable housing within Vancouver and often have to make the difficult decision to move further from Vancouver and commute upwards of two to three hours daily to work or to alter their careers, given living in Vancouver and working as an essential worker is not financially sustainable. This is a significant loss to our community and to our services. It is essential to have affordable housing options throughout Vancouver in neighbourhoods to ensure women and young families can live and work in our communities and provide the many essential services needed within Vancouver. Like other areas in the downtown area, we understand that established community members may be anxious about adding childcare, affordable housing, and elementary schools to their neighbourhoods. However, once they're built, we have found that communities have become more vibrant, more diverse, and safer with the addition of young children, young children and their families. For the childcare centres and the elementary schools within the downtown peninsula, we have found that there is a higher percentage of people who walk or bike or roll, which contributes to a greener city. For example, we typically have upwards of 75 to 80% of our families walking or biking to pick up or drop off their children at our centres. As a majority of the families do live within walking distance of the centres. We at VSOC strongly encourage and support the development of a highly, a high-quality licensed childcare centre, as well as an elementary school and the social housing at 480 Broughton. The city has been at the forefront of creating childcare spaces and has recognised the importance of quality, affordable childcare and housing for the economy, for the labour force participation, for gender equality, social inclusion, and early childhood development. We acknowledge and commend the city of Vancouver for their leadership and commitment to building communities which include important amenities and services for families. And we believe this development is well-aligned with these goals and ideals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Counselor Weave has a question for you. Go ahead, Counselor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one, you talked about 75, 80% you think could walk or bike. Do you think that would be the same for this school and childcare? Recognizing, is there a lot of families in the immediate vicinity? Because we heard a lot of conversation that there'll be a lot of car trips. I'm just wondering, do you think there's a pent-up demand in a walkable distance from the site?
Yes, I do. Within, we have a centre at the Bayshore Gardens location, which is a few blocks away. And about 75% of our families at that location walk or bike to the centre. There are many families that actually live in the surrounding towers. And with every new tower that goes up in the neighbourhood, there are even more families. And they need childcare, they need elementary schools. Right now, many of those families have had to cross Georgia to get to Lord Roberts and Lord Roberts Annex to go to school. And it's just a bit frustrating for the families that they have to go out of the neighbourhood to, to get, to go to school with their children. I think if the school and the childcare were within walking distance, you will find most of those families will walk and bike to, to the school. Most of the families, as the previous caller had mentioned, typically don't drive. Many of them typically walk to the amenities in their neighbourhoods, to the parks that are within the neighbourhood. And I would expect that would be very similar in this case. We found that this was also the case at Elsie Roy and Dorothy Lamb. We found it at International Village. All of our centres, our families typically do walk or bike to the centres.
Okay, and a follow-up question. We had a speaker two back that talked about kind of the engineering and the difficulty of the hill and how people walk or bike. I'm just wondering, do you think that could be addressed? And do you think if we did a follow-up traffic plan that we'd be able to address some of those issues?
I think so. I think also, you know, to be, to be honest, many of families do walk and bike already. And so they're quite able. And it's a fantastic thing for children when you think about how important it is for, for people's health to be out and walking and biking. That I, I don't think a hill is going to prevent that. And they may choose a smaller hill. There, there are other roundabout ways to get to where they want to go. If, if, you know, a slightly smaller hill might be, you know, down a couple of blocks. That might work better for them.
All right, thanks a lot for coming and speaking today.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for you. So just want to thank you for calling in tonight. Thanks very much. Next, we have 74, Jane Hayman.
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Jane Hayman. I'm speaking in support of the motion. I was born in Vancouver and I've lived here most of my life. I'm one of the co-founders of the Performing Arts Lodge, PAL Vancouver, social housing for performing arts seniors at 581 Cardero Street in Coal Harbour. I don't currently live in Coal Harbour, but my husband and I own one of the Life Lease Suites at PAL and we plan to move there sometime in the next five years. Hearing about objections to the Broughton Street project, I was viscerally reminded of the experiences that PAL's co-founder Joy Coghill and I had nearly 20 years ago. Then too, Coal Harbour residents objected first to the idea of social housing in their neighbourhood and then to the idea of a group of performing arts seniors being selected to build and live there. Luckily, a group of yes-in-my-backyard Coal Harbour residents, led by Carol Taylor and Art Phillips prevailed. They argued in favour of retaining the Cardero Street site for social housing because they wanted to live in a vibrant, mixed neighbourhood with residents of all ages, backgrounds, and income levels. I believe this need still exists. The next fight was over which nonprofit housing association would be chosen to develop the site. Again, petitions, letters to the editor, and turbulent council meetings, fears of noise, traffic, et cetera. But eventually, with the support of city staff and a number of councillors, PAL Vancouver was selected and the building opened its doors in 2006. 111 apartments, two daycares operated by VSOC, a beautiful rooftop garden and a theatre. Ultimately, the fears and objections raised 20 years ago were proved wrong. The building and its residents are good neighbours. The theatre, pre-pandemic, housed all sorts of events and performances that enlivened the area and enriched the lives of the area residents. The daycare and PAL residents have even collaborated on projects. PAL has become a meeting place and a hub of local activity. I'm sure the same will happen with the proposed Broughton Street project in all sorts of surprising and, I hope, delightful ways. Vancouver needs more innovative, affordable projects like this one, not less. I look forward to the day when we see more affordable housing, sharing grounds with schools and daycares, and maybe even space for artists of all sorts. Perhaps teachers will live there. Perhaps young families with children, together with seniors. Perhaps actors, painters, plumbers, nurses, frontline workers. More and more Vancouverites prefer not to use cars, as everybody has been saying in the last few minutes, but only if they can afford to live and work close to the amenities they and their families need. I want to live in a city that acts boldly to accomplish its goals of climate action, affordability, inclusion, and community. I want to stop hearing how unaffordable it is or that young and middle-aged people, many of whom I taught at Studio 58 Langara College, are having to move from this city they love because they can't afford to live here and raise their families. I urge you to vote in favour of this project and not to delay it any further. This school has been needed for more than 20 years. More affordable housing and daycare spaces have been urgently needed in Vancouver since the 1980s, when my child was in daycare. I'm sure any problematic details can be worked out in the coming months. Even if a hole is dug tomorrow, it'll be several years before the project is completed. It's possible to say yes and continue to build relationships and improve details while going forward. To me, the Broughton Street project could be a template for many more mixed projects that maximise the use of space and help to build community. And Vancouver could again become a city where all sorts of people not only want to live, but feel welcomed and supported. And by the way, PAL Vancouver, that project that so many people didn't want and certainly thought would never work, was so successful that it'll soon have a sister. PAL 2 is going up in US Minster. Sometimes you just have to dive in. So thank you very much, mayor and council, for listening. Please vote yes and increase the number of social housing units in Coal Harbour. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You do have a question from Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, mayor, and thanks, Jane, for speaking to council. I wonder, interested in your sort of reflection back to the PAL experience and how the community reacted then. I wonder if you could sort of zero in. Were there a couple of specific concerns that stood out? And in your experience, did they actually come to pass? Were there mitigation measures that needed to be taken? Can you comment on that a little bit around concerns that people had?
Well, it's 20 years ago, so I wouldn't swear on a Bible that I'm correct about this. But first of all, there was just objection to the kind of people that social housing would bring in. Because I think a lot of people misconstrue what social housing is. I mean, in my, in my mind, all housing should be, should be social housing. Everybody deserves to live someplace that they can afford. But I think that that was the idea of many of the people who were objecting. And they wanted us to build it somewhere else. There certainly were concerns around too much noise. There's a theatre on the eighth floor. People were concerned that it would bring a lot of traffic in. It brought a lot of people in, but it hasn't brought an enormous amount of traffic. People, as been said, walk from the West End, they walk from Coal Harbour. But, you know, I think those were the two major things. And we didn't, we didn't do very much to change anything except move in there. And, and, and then as we start, you know, people are afraid of things. I'm generalizing, but I think often people are afraid of things that they don't know. And so, once we moved there and once the building was there and once the residents were living there and, and they were creating art and they were welcoming, everything melted away. I mean, I'm sure there's nobody in Coal Harbour that remembers that there was ever objection to it. Because I know that, that a lot of them use it and it gets, the theatre gets used for events for the Coal Harbour Residents Association and, and other things like that.
And, and the theatre is used, like you said, the rental space is used by residents? Residents also attend?
No, it's both. I mean, the residents, it's, it's an amenity space for the residents, but it's also available for rent by, you know, by local people who want to do things or put on shows or want to have meetings or events or anybody in Vancouver. So it's, it's, it's a space that's made available to, to the community. And sometimes, I mean, a few years back, we would do a big Canada Day event that was free to all Coal Harbour residents. And, and, and it was a wonderful event that was, you know, that everybody contributed to. And, and there've been other events like that. So it, I mean, you know, the, the, the social planners who advocated for us said that we would animate the streets. And I think that whenever you have a kind of a mixed project, like PAL or like what, what I imagine would happen with the Broughton Street project, that's what happens. You build community.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you calling in on a hot summer evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions for you. So thanks again for calling in and sharing your thoughts. I am going to move to the next.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Going to move to the next speaker, 75, Siobhan Pawloski.
Mayor Stewart, no for the speaker 75.
Okay, thanks. I'll try 76, Mina Taby.
No.
Okay, thanks. 77, Margaret Klima.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi there. Please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I think most of what has been said, I'm opposed to the project. I don't oppose to social housing or school. But I do oppose to the school being so close to the water and the traffic. I, I just feel that this is a disaster waiting to happen. I also have concerns that the project is based on 26-year-old studies. City Hall has built up Vancouver quite a bit since 26 years ago. It's quite highly densified and congested downtown. I don't think that this, this school should be built here. I think it would be better served for people, all people in the West End to have it more close into the middle of the West End and have what's there refurbished or re-engineered to look at the community centre there to build up. You know, we do have a climate emergency programme that you guys have come up with. And it's been so hot. And we have a climate crisis here. We don't need to be adding more traffic into this area. This, this is so packed with people already. I mean, Brownland can only hold eight, about eight cars. The roads are narrow here. If you put in another 200, 500, or 1,000 cars or 1,000 people in here, it's not going to work. Even if you re-engineer it, because you've got Georgia, that's one of the most busiest thoroughways through here. You've got high slopes going up into the West End. Whereas the West End is more gentle, quieter streets, safer for everybody. I, I just, I just don't think the school should be built here. I, I, I think it would be better served in the middle. Also, your bus lines are going east and west. Or they, they aren't going north and south. So you're not bringing, you know, people down to the waterfront here through bus lines. I don't know. I just, I, I, most everybody has spoken about the traffic patterns and different things. So I'm not going to go on into that. But I'm just saying what I personally feel. I do feel that we need some more independent studies done and current studies done on this project. I don't think we need to rush this through. I think we need to think about this and how the public's taxpaying dollars are better spent. I, I don't think that they, that the cost to do social housing here, the land cost, the building cost, I, I don't think this would be affordable for people. I think, I think we need to rethink this. I, I love having diversity in the city. I come from San Francisco originally. I love diversification. This, this is just not, this, I bring it in here, but the children, this is just not safe for this, for the school. And I'm all for social housing. This is just not safe for it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for your time tonight. I have no questions from council for you. So we'll be moving on to the next speaker. Thanks again for calling in. Next is 78, Becky Chan.
Hello?
Hi there.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Oh, yeah.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have lived in Coal Harbour for about 20 years. And I have two children, ages 13 and 11, who attend or have attended Lord Roberts Elementary School. So the Broughton Street project is near and dear to me. I wholeheartedly support the project and I concur with many of the points that have already been made in support of the project. I understand that the subject matter of this meeting relates to the amendment to the proposal, which is the addition of one floor to the existing project. And this would result in 20 additional units of social housing.
I'm strongly in favour of this amendment. Affordable family housing is sorely lacking in downtown Vancouver. While some families choose to leave downtown, many choose to stay. It's crucial that the people who work in the city and serve the residents of downtown, including frontline workers, can reside close to work. There has been a great deal of discussion, for good reason, about carbon emissions and traffic by those who are opposed to the project. A significant, this project makes a significant step towards reducing our carbon footprint
A significant, this project makes a significant step towards reducing our carbon footprint by having people live close to where they work and go to school. This project will also contribute to inclusivity, diversity, and it will also make the neighbourhood more vibrant. Well, we are not, as Mayor said, re-prosecuting the entire project, including the school. I'll add a few comments about it, seeing as others have too. I'm strongly in favor of the development. A school is desperately needed in the neighbourhood, and many people have already said that. Families do live in Coal Harbour. Many of us do have children. My family has taken our kids to school outside of the neighbourhood into the West End, and it certainly would be far more efficient and convenient for the people who live in Coal Harbour to have a school here. While I will not benefit directly from this project, I think the neighbourhood will benefit immensely from it. There has been, as I said, a great deal of discussion about traffic and carbon emissions, which is completely legitimate. Having more people live in a walkable community where parents work close to where they live and where children are within walking distance or biking distance to school appears to address this, that the net benefit to carbon emissions, I think, seems to be apparent to me overall. As others have already pointed out, most kids who attend school downtown walk, bike, or roll. People are not generally driving to school. It's not going to be a case where there's a long lineup of parents picking up their kids on Broughton Street or Hastings Street. And kids who are young, as young as five- to six-year-olds, do in fact walk for fifteen minutes from neighbourhood to neighbourhood. I mean, that's, if you look on Cordero and Butte Street in the morning, there are tons of kids walking uphill and downhill. The concerns that have been raised by the people who are opposed to the project, losing views, crime, changing the fabric of the community, are not supportable by evidence and have tenors of not in my backyard and elitist, I guess, tones to their arguments. There's been discussion about the safety of the marina. And I have to say, I've spent a great deal of time with my children, who were toddlers and at a very young age, but the marina and safety has never been a concern. And that's all I have to say, and I really do hope that the Council approves this project.
Thank you so much. That's it. There are no questions for you, so I am going to move on to the next speaker. We have speaker number seventy-nine, Lisa MacLeod.
Mayor Stewart, we do not have speaker number seventy-nine.
Okay, thanks. Just checking here, Council. Okay, so that is the end of the registered speakers. I am going to have the first call then for any other speakers that, that were not registered or perhaps were, were not available when their name was called. So, I'll make my first call and ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line for to speak to this item?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, there are several additional speakers on the line.
Okay. So, let's start with the next speaker. How do you want to do this? Do you want?
We have, sorry, Mayor Stewart, we did assign them numbers, so you can start with speaker number eighty-one.
Okay, thanks. So, we have speaker number eighty-one, please.
Hello?
Hi there. Could you let us know your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver? And then you have up to five minutes to speak.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members, and people of whom you are hearing me. My name is Amir Erfanian, A-M-I-R, and my family name is Erfanian, E-R-F-A-N-I-A-N. And I'm a member of Coal Harbour community, and I live in this area.
Great.
Hello? Yep.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Sure. I want to mean to start with this. First of all, I'm an engineer, and in my entire life, I worked as risk manager and loss adjuster. The reason I'm emphasizing on this is that I want to mean to say, in my entire life, I saw, I handled, I inspected more than ten thousand incidents and losses in my entire life. Maybe more than, I mean, anybody that you're, you're hearing me. In two thousand twenty and two thousand fifteen, I was on-call adjuster when this too, when the storm happened in Vancouver. And I have to say, Vancouver was hopeless. We called police, we called the city, we called them everywhere. Nobody had helped us for the incident that we had here in downtown area or in Vancouver, and people were devastated. So, there hasn't been no clue, no help. So, I have a very clear question for this specific project. I want to mean to say, whether there is any specific sociology and risk assessment study and report, and is there any traffic report for this project? If the answer is yes, please let us take a look. Because, I mean, these are, I mean, our community's concern. But if no, especially for this one, then you say, for example, oh, we want to mean to increase the height. You guys have need to check whether there is, you are adding any additional risk to this project and this community. The questions are whether anybody has checked the risk and loss incidence history of these type of residential units and mixing residential and the school? A lady said, oh, it's a good idea to mix, I mean, and also use everything as a complex. Whether you checked how many tragedy we had all around the world when we mix school with something else? Why you insist on this mistake to approve and combine a school with something else? I'm not against, I mean, construction of a school. I'm not against construction of a residential or, I mean, this affordable housing. Definitely, we need it. But what I say and what the community says, we are against adding additional risk to downtown. Why you are trying to experience another tragedy, camp路s, I mean, tragedy, which we hear and we all, I mean, hear, and we don't have, I mean, Canada Day tomorrow, is because of these, I mean, doubts that we had. Some people say, oh, I feel this, oh, I think this. We are in this country, we have lots of universities, lots of engineers. Please let engineers, please let, I mean, these universities do some study. Check to see, I mean, if it's correct, yes, we will do that. If not, please don't, I mean, make another tragedy. Why, I mean, we don't listen to, I mean, why you don't listen, I mean, to our communities and our, I mean, to the concerns and also, I mean, anxiety that we have for this project? Everybody says, oh, it's about the view. No, it's not about the view. It's about, I mean, this project, mixing the school with residential, complexing. These are, I mean, arrogant, I mean, ideas that we had, I mean, twenty years ago. Now, in this, in this moment, we need some plane, and we need some study to say, yes, whether it's safe or not. We are talking about safety and health of the kids, of the teachers, of the students. We are talking about health and safety of this community. So, somebody should take care of that. And, sorry, I'm, I'm, I mean, pointing, I mean, to the council members and, I mean, Honorable Mayor, you guys. You are, I mean, talking, and also, you will decide for the taxpayers' money. And this is, I mean, the money that, I mean, and we chose you, we voted for you guys to protect them in community. If there is no study, if there is no specific sociology and risk assessment study, if there is no complete traffic study, please stop this project, especially raising the height. So, they have no idea. They are just only, I mean, the numbers, and, I mean, the designer says, oh, it's better, I mean, to, I mean, increase the height. Why? Just because, I mean, the project is not feasible? Does that mean that, I mean, we increase the number of units to have, I mean, the better project? Or, I mean, good-looking? No.
Thank you for answering. You have, you've hit your five-minute limit, so we'll, I don't see any questions for you.
I have just one point for me for one minute. Can I go just for one?
Nope, you've hit your five minutes. Thanks so much. We're moving on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, our next speaker is Arzu Taragati.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. You have up to five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council member. Good evening, everybody. I want to add my vote to oppose this project, which is based on outdated data and information, which is in rush right now. You know, our lives have changed since twenty years ago. The concerns are now global warming and global pandemic. I would like to add my voice and to say my comments regarding the opposition of this project. First thing is that this is going through a record heat wave. The transportation study says this project will cause nine hundred seventy new car trips a day, increase of traffic, which will clog the area. What does that mean? It means air pollution, sound pollution for everybody who lives here, for the residents, increasing carbon emissions in violence of the city's climate emergency plan. We should consider for healthier environment, healthier Vancouver, and green city. City won't let us review the final version of the transportation study, which is unfair and many, and maybe violation of our rights as residents of Coal Harbour. We should be able to review before they vote. My other concern is the marina gate being open will attract young children. It is a dangerous area. Surely, you recognize that, think of the number of children who have drowned because they were close to swimming pool. This is the main concern. Kids are attracted to boats, to marinas, to heli jets, and open door marina is a tragedy making to happen. Why are you acting before the final transportation study have been completed? Why are you not considering the right of the Coal Harbour residents? Please respect all the Coal Harbour residents, which are going to benefit and relocate these projects to somewhere else, which are going to benefit all the neighbourhoods at Coal Harbour. Thank you.
Thanks for your time tonight. We don't have any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks again so much. We have speaker number eighty-three, Stephen Seth.
Oh, hi. I'd like to say that the project at four eighty Broughton is too big and too ambitious for the size of the lot. I've listened to all kinds of conversation about the whole thing here. I, I don't mind schools and public housing. We've been short on public housing for over twenty years in Vancouver already. So, what's the big rush to get this one done? I, I, I'm suggesting that you possibly move this over to four ninety-nine Denman Street, because you guys own the property there. It's a lot more flat. You'll get a bigger bang for your buck than what you would over on Broughton Street, because it's, it's too narrow. And coming down the hill, going northbound, there's too many car accidents on the corner of Pender and Broughton all the time. I'm the one that's always calling emergency, because people are getting in car accidents, they're getting hit by bicycles, they're just getting hit by vehicles that are going east and west as people are heading north and south on Broughton Street. So, that whole, that short block area is so steep. People are, are blindfired by the traffic on West Pender all the time. So, I think that this project needs to move over to four ninety-nine Denman Street, which is bigger and flatter and more comparable with the other schools that everybody's talking about, Yael Town and Falls Creek, because those spaces are on flat, wide property where it's wide open. This is a really small, tight, congested area, and we have way too much traffic already. And I've had to wait in my car sometimes half an hour getting into my driveway, because both Pender and Hastings are constantly jam-packed full during rush hour, and the traffic doesn't flow, because everybody's trying to cross the lines gate. So, that's all I have to say. I'm opposed to the extra height on the building that you guys are asking. It's not necessary. If you want to increase the height, move over to four ninety-nine Denman Street. You already own the property. Build on that site, and you'll have more money, better bang for your buck there. That's all I have to say.
Thanks so much. You don't have any questions tonight, so I will move on to the next speaker. Thanks. We have speaker number eighty-four, Larry Keenan.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready, please.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Keenan. I represent sixty residents from a nearby strata, HES four sixty.
Sorry, sir, we, we seem to have lost you. You're quite unclued. Excuse me, sir. You're quite, your phone is breaking up?
Okay.
Try it again?
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Larry Keenan. I represent sixty residents from a nearby strata, HES four sixty. I presented a petition against this project and this amendment. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I listened at the last public meeting in March, when all voices in the local community strongly opposed this project. They appeared the message was clear, yet your committee still unanimously supported it. These were not petty objections, but genuine concerns specifically to traffic congestion, child safety, and environmental impact. There was no response to these concerns before your committee chose to push ahead. I have little confidence that the committee will reconsider what I or anyone else has to say today, but allow me to put this on record. After ignoring our pleas, you have come back to the well for even more. Congestion is obviously not a consideration to the city of Vancouver, be it traffic, safety, environmental, or emissions. So, hey, these twenty more housing units make no difference to you. Then why not one hundred or even two hundred more? If you're not going to consider the genuine concerns of locals, then why not build bigger and higher? But is this the smartest idea for social housing? What if your commission made the comment at the end of the last public hearing, claiming that this was nothing more than a car park worth one or two million dollars? Well, this is so far from the truth and reveals a basic lack of economic and understanding of this project. This is not just any car park. This is ours, in the centre of our community. More than that, it is like, most likely, the most valuable car lot in Canada, if not the world, given its prime downtown Vancouver waterfront location. If you are insistent on developing this location based on highest and best use, it's likely worth two hundred million. If the land was sold to a developer with, without the school childcare facility provisor. If you were to build one or two hundred units here and sell them to the market, the full market value would be four hundred million. At that price, you could take that money and build social housing for twice as many in the West End or five times as many in the East Side. More importantly, the city would collect two to three million dollars a year in taxes from homeowners who bought at market value. That's every year to the end of time. It's not to pay for the maintenance and management of your social housing project anywhere. Instead, apart from BC Hydro, who gets to pay for this project as well? It could be people of Coal Harbour through the taxes, of course. And here's the rub. If you proceed with your social housing project, who gets to decide who should have the privilege of living in the most expensive zip code in Canada? Who wins the lottery to live in a two to three million dollar market value home on the waterfront? And who gets to remain homeless? It's wonderful you are offering an allocation to low-income families who have children attending the school. But what happens when that child graduates? What's your eviction policy that will allow new families, a replacement of the old, so that they could attend the school? Or do the same sixty residents get to stay here for the rest of their lives and their families after that? One, the ultimate lottery. What is their incentive to leave? To earn more? You're offering to help sixty individuals or families in a project that can otherwise support three hundred elsewhere. As a member of the Coal Harbour community, I feel the city has taken advantage using COVID protocol to limit the ability for us to organize and communicate our concerns. You know, if one hundred percent of people at a physical city of Vancouver public forum opposed the project, it would not go ahead. You know, if one hundred percent of people at a physical city of Vancouver public forum opposed the project, it would not go ahead. It certainly would not be expanded. So what would it take for you to listen to our community? What would it take to be heard? Do we not pay our taxes on July the second? Would you listen to us now?
Thank you so much, sir. That's, uh, it for your time, five minutes, and there are no questions. So I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks again for calling in. Let's see, council, uh, next speaker is, uh, Dean Palmer, speaker number eighty-five, Dean Palmer.
Testing, testing.
You're working okay, go ahead, please, up to five minutes.
Great, thanks. Okay, well, evening, mayor, council, members of the public. Uh, my name's Dean Palmer. I'm a post-secondary instructor in law and construction and I live kitty corner to the proposed site. I'm in opposition to the amendments to the height, density and floor plan amendment. Uh, I have four points tonight. First off would be the height. So I took a look at, uh, slide eight of thirteen in the staff proposal. I think there's some confusion over the amount of increase and I'd like to give a different perspective on that. I see in the design, and there was some discussion of a height increase of only four point zero nine meters. But if we look at the image here, beyond the permitted thirty meters allowed in the CD one zoning, um, not only is there four point oh nine on top, but then there's an extra floor essentially for mechanical, probably related to the passive house construction. And then another, um, perhaps four meters on top for the cooling tower. And then with the change in the old base plan elevation being horizontal to the new four corner, um, plan elevation, which, you know, seems like a reasonable idea. There's, you know, another four point seven meters perhaps underneath. So, so we're looking at an overall increase of more like possibly forty-five feet. So I think we should keep that in mind. Um, secondly, the context of this height and what it's going to impact in the neighborhood is important. And planner Dominiac went through some of that for us to the east, south, east, south and west and mentioned that there's, um, you know, thirty-seven story towers and a ten-story office building, which I believe is to the southeast from the diagrams. There is also, of course, and very importantly, um, the park to the immediate, uh, east of the proposed site. And, uh, this park is going to be considerably shadowed by the increase in height. And, uh, it's a very small park and I think that's another reason that I feel a modest sized school and social housing project is appropriate. Um, as long as we can manage the engineering and traffic concerns, which, you know, I absolutely agree with, are also big issues. To the southwest of this building is my own building called Dockside, which was developed by the same architect, I believe Enrique Alvarez. Um, I, I just found it, uh, I think it's important that we notice that that building's there because that was not mentioned in the materials or the introduction. It's a seven-story building, low density, you know, it's, um, live work. Uh, and there's a nice, uh, it looks like kind of a boat and there's a slope to it. And many people have gardens on the front of the building. So of course, you know, the sightlines will be affected from this building as will, uh, the sunlight that's available. But I think more importantly, the CD one, uh, zoning, as we can see in the Coal Harbour development plan, looks for kind of a staged, uh, rise in heights from the foreshore. And that takes me to my third point. There was some discussion by the planner too on this, um, development plan and talk about, uh, fifty-five meters high. I read the plan, it's quite a detailed document. And it doesn't permit fifty-five meters. I mean, the development plan doesn't permit anything really. It just gives some guidelines on how to develop Coal Harbour. And I think it's great, you know, it talks about different things we should look at. And one of them is how to preserve the parks. And that development plan actually said that, uh, you know, that space as a parking lot was part of the plan. So I don't, I don't think we're constrained by that plan. We should look more at the, the zoning and the thirty meter maximum as a reasonable height. Um, my fourth point, I guess, is the process. I, I teach in this area. The mayor has drawn our attention a few times to the quasi judicial nature of this proceeding, which I think is great. And what does that mean to us? I mean, to me, it means that, uh, we need to pay attention to the principles of justice, which are, you know, adequate notice, a fair hearing and no bias. Or at least, you know, that we have no apprehension of bias. And I've heard unfortunately that it's already come to a court action for judicial review. And, and obviously as citizens and residents in Vancouver, we don't want a big expensive site with taxpayer money. So I, I agree with the mayor. I think, you know, following this quasi judicial process in appropriate way is very important. And I've heard a lot of concerns and I certainly share them, that the engineering reports, was that five minutes?
It is five minutes and that is the full, the full hearing. So, uh, so I just wanted to thank you so much for calling in.
That's my last point, thank you.
Thanks very much. And there are no questions for you, so I'll, uh, move on to the next figure, but thanks for, for calling in. Um, let's see, we have, uh, speaker number eighty-six, Ben Humphreys next. Sorry, Ben.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Hi, um, yeah, my name's Ben Humphreys. Um, I've been renting in the area for the last, uh, four years and I want to voice my support for the project and for the extension for the social housing. Um, I want to thank you for your time and your patience for the last two days. Um, so, so far we've heard from mostly, it seems, um, retirees who own multimillion dollar apartments in the area, whose views will be spoiled, people who own yachts in the marina, um, people saying like, what's the rush? Um, because they won't benefit from this. I'd like to present my viewpoint, um, as someone who has been renting, um, and who has a two-year-old child who actually attends the Basial Gardens, um, daycare. Um, though a lot of my points would have been covered in that way, way more eloquently by the previous speakers. Um, but I wanted to voice my support because many families don't have the time to join calls like this. They're looking after children in the evening, um, and I think they would, uh, their voices would definitely need to be heard. And, um, I think a lot of people who have, uh, voiced their, uh, their opinion against this project would be, any of the extension would I really understand a bit better where people are coming from and why this project is needed and why the extension is needed. Um, and they would directly benefit from this project. So I'm, I'm incredibly relieved to hear that the, the school and the construction in general will go ahead. And this discussion is just whether, um, additional units will be added. And so I definitely want to voice my support for, for the additional social housing. Um, and so, yeah, the main criticism that people seem to be coming back to over and over again is, um, traffic being a problem. Um, that there'll be more people living in the area and that somehow they'll be using their cars to drive to daycare. Um, and so how somehow adding this extra floor will add someone set up to a thousand carts, which is, um, not sane at all. Um, so these people would be arriving to pick up their children at three PM, not at five PM, uh, during the rush hour. Ten additional units would not add significant traffic. And if you think about it for more than two seconds, um, adding a school in this area would actually reduce traffic. Um, we've heard from previous speakers that there are two thousand people on a waiting list for Basial Gardens. That's two thousand families, um, and they're all people that live in the area. So those people are currently driving their children to daycare and other things further away. And so if they actually had daycare in the area, those cars would be removed from the road. So there'd be less climate impact, there'd be less traffic. Um, yeah, it just doesn't make any sense that there would be added traffic. Um, and yeah, the, in terms of like the number of votes, oh, ninety-nine percent of people, uh, who live in the area are against it. If you ask those people, are they, do they have children? Do they, um, have anything else other than just the fact that they own a multimillion dollar apartment? Like, I, I think it's a real lack of empathy towards people that are two parents working two jobs to try and pay for, they can only afford to rent in the area. And in order for one person to be able to, for both people to be able to work and like, you know, the emancipation of women in order to be able to like go out and work, you, you need daycare. It, it really can't be overstated how important daycare is. Um, and so, you know, it will affect the, the extension will affect the views of one or two floors of people and the surrounding buildings, which is like, what, ten families versus the hundred families that will be, um, that will be able to have daycare and like the, the school. Uh, I just, it, it just seems like on the balance, if the positives outweigh the negatives, it's by an extreme amount. Um, and regarding the traffic again, people have said that, oh, well, West Georgia is gridlocked. So they're just adding traffic will make things worse. Well, if it's gridlocked, people won't drive to school, they will walk to school. People are very used to walking, you know, three or four blocks with children. You can see people walking from Coal Harbour up towards the West End, um, to take their kids to school there. And so, yeah, people already walk. And we've heard from the, one of the people who runs, um, the, uh, VSOC, the, the daycare there, that, that, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of people already walk to school. And I can, I can verify that as a parent and you don't see anybody driving their kids to school because everybody lives in the area. And so for the, the, the new proposed building and the extension, it's going to be the same. There's, you're not going to see an increase in traffic at all. And people that live in the building, they're just going to use the elevator and go down. Um, yeah, it's just going to revitalize the area, um, and having additional social housing is vital at this time. There's, we need more variety of people living in the area. Um, we need greater empathy for people with different classes and different backgrounds. Um, and we need less, less nimbyism, basically. I mean, I can't really put it any other way. Um, thank you for your time and thank you for your patience yesterday and today. Thank you.
Thanks much. Uh, there are no questions for you, but just want to say thanks for calling in this evening as we move to our next, uh, speaker. We have, uh, speaker number eighty-seven, Jennifer Bradshaw.
Hello, Mayor Council, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'll keep this short, uh, since many young parents have already said what I'd like to say. Uh, I am of course in strong support of this project. Uh, we need more social housing everywhere, especially in Coal Harbour, which is a very, very privileged, wealthy area. The children of the families living in social housing here will benefit greatly from the social mix. They'll have a great community network and many opportunities that they might not have elsewhere. I would personally love to live in the social housing and pay for the market rents and help to subsidize the non-market homes. In fact, I've long hoped to live in downtown Peninsula since I work there, but haven't been able to quite afford it. I find the concerns around traffic odd, like many others before me, because some people like me, living closer to my work, would need less traffic, not more. Statistically, uh, people living in multifamily housing in urban centers have about a third of the emissions of people living in detached houses and suburbs. So overall, this will mean less emissions, not more, because more people will walk and roll for most or all of their needs, work, school, groceries, activities. If I had kids and lived here, I would most certainly walk them to school. Uh, as you heard, there are two thousand children on waitlist for children to childcare. You've heard from young mothers that have lived experience hoping desperately for childcare and I might be one of them one day. We need this so desperately that we should really have an expedited process for building new childcare spaces. We cannot afford more delay. Two thousand children and their working mothers need childcare. Uh, I'm currently living in George Collingwood area, but would absolutely be happy to move to Coal Harbour, no matter the density. Density to me just means more people want to live there and are willing to share the benefits with everyone. The proximity to the seas, the Stanley Park, childcare and elementary school, the shops of downtown. I think we need more homes here, especially non-market homes, to welcome everyone who wants to live here. I strongly believe in every neighborhood for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time tonight. You do have a question from, uh, councillor Dejanova, councillor Dejanova, please go ahead.
Thanks so much and thanks for your comments about, uh, childcare spaces and what it means to you. I'm just wondering, do you, do you think that if council moves at the pace that we have been moving and we don't approve new spaces, do you feel that we'll be able to serve the need of future generations, the new childcare? Um, you, you very well pointed out that already there are two thousand children, if not more, on the waitlist right now for childcare in Vancouver. But just wondered your thoughts about that. How quickly do you think we need to, to move forward?
We are so desperate, we need to move so much more quickly than we have been, the waitlist just keeps growing. Um, and this isn't just the Vancouver, city of Vancouver issue, it's BCY. That's why the provincial government has been pushing for more childcare programs. And so it's not a question of, oh, can I move to another area to, to raise children? No, everywhere has, has, is not building enough childcare. Nobody is moving at the pace that they, they should be. And that, that, that's honestly why I'm a, I would be a working mother. And honestly, because of these like horror stories I've heard about getting access to child, childcare, getting access to a school that's in a decent distance from your house. That's, these are the two biggest issues why I am currently child free and I don't know if I'll ever be able to have children.
Thanks very much for sharing your experience. Um, just another question about the expedited process. I, uh, one of the first motions is a policy motion, but we're talking about a public hearing, a very specific project. Would you like to see this, that if this project moves forward, this application and it passes, would you like to see some kind of pilot where perhaps there's expedited, um, licensing for the childcare onsite or something like that? I moved a motion at the beginning of the term that asked our staff to look at that, um, working with the province, Vancouver Coastal Health. I mean, it's not just the city of Vancouver that's involved in childcare and can sign off. Would you think that that would be helpful to helping more spaces come online more quickly?
Absolutely, both for social housing and for childcare, we absolutely need an expedited process. Our processes are currently failing. We have so many people on the waitlist and I'm also, I would be on the waitlist, but I haven't even bothered because I don't have children.
Thank you very much for making the time to share your experience with us today and for your presentation.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Uh, appreciate you calling in tonight. Thanks so much. And we're going to move on to the next speaker. Let's see here, we've got, um, speaker number eighty-eight, Mark Arktemachuk. Speaker number eighty-eight, Mark Arktemachuk.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Council, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm a resident of Coal Harbour, happened for over eighteen years and then downtown for over twenty. I'm in my forties, so I was an early adopter coming downtown and the city council at the time promised that, that we had to come downtown and we could live the rest of our lives there. So thank you for, for supporting, uh, livable downtowns. Um, I'm in support of the motion. Um, I'm also directly impacted and my views are directly impacted by not only the building, but the additional floors. And I'm still in support of this, this project. Um, in fact, I'm somewhat disappointed that the project hasn't come back asking for more density. We've seen repeatedly all across, especially the downtown peninsula, added density being allowed on sites. This is a twenty-five-year-old plan. There's all sorts of appetite and, and ability for this, this site to handle more density. And, and it's a bit disappointing that, that, uh, we're only asking for one additional floor. I will lose my views, like many on the call already. I will lose the beautiful blue boathouses of, uh, of, of Coal Harbour, uh, and of Deadman's Island. Unfortunately, this project comes too late for my family, though. Uh, my kids have spent the last four years at Roberts Elementary. And I've contributed to the traffic congestion in that area because it's very difficult and frankly, sometimes unsafe for me to bring my kids across Pender, Georgia and all Bernie streets and get them there in a safe way. So I have many times, especially in inclement weather, driven my kids that short distance, that five-minute drive that contributes to more traffic in our downtown core. This school's been needed ever since it was part of the plans twenty-five years ago. I wonder where all my fellow neighbors in Coal Harbour believe the kids they see every day and on the weekends go to school. We desperately need a school in Coal Harbour. Um, again, it's going to come too late for my family. Um, my kids will be into secondary school by the time this school is built. Um, it's disappointing that it had to come because of, um, other opportunities with BC Hydro and others, but I'm so thankful that it's proceeding. I was also very disappointed and the reason I'm speaking today is that I was so disappointed in my fellow residents that there was so much animosity against this project to begin with. This, this project has been on the plans for twenty-five years. Everyone who's spoken today has built, bought or moved into this neighborhood, knowing full well that there was a project and public housing coming with that site. And it was only a matter of time before they were responding for both the school and public housing to, to come available. Similarly with, with traffic, um, please, Mayor and Council, don't be swayed by the nimbyism in the form of, of these, these, these traffic studies, these, uh, these things that are going to tell us that this, this site just can't handle any more traffic. It's a complete misnomer. These neighbors of mine bought and chose to live in one of the most congested neighborhoods in the city of Vancouver. And one of the densest, densest neighborhoods that we've heard repeatedly tonight. And they chose to do that. Um, and this is just a tiny blip of additional traffic. In fact, like many of my supporters have spoken of, this neigh, this, this school will actually cause many of us to stop driving our kids and to reduce the amount of traffic on the streets. There are so many kids in this neighborhood, uh, that want and have been, you know, just seeking an opportunity to go to school and to walk to school. And they've just not given it because the school has been just too late. So again, I'll reiterate, I'm in support of this, this motion, I'm supportive of the additional density and additional height. I am directly impacted and I'm still supportive and I'm, I'm, I'm sad in that, uh, um, we've heard so many negative neighbors of mine. I am directly impacted and I'm still supportive. And I'm, I'm, I'm saddened that, uh, um, we've heard so many negative neighbours of mine confess to just all the challenges of this project. But this is, this is just a home run. And I'm just wishing that there was a little bit more, um, support and, and a little bit more backbone at the proj, at the project level to maybe even increase it by more than just one floor. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. But thanks for participating tonight. We have speaker number eighty-nine, Farida Alasi.
Hello?
Hi there. Uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm a owner and resident of Coal Harbour. I've got a fourteen-year-old and I've got a six-year-old now. So this past September, every single day, I'm taking my five-year-old. He entered kindergarten at Lord Dobbard Annex. So we're walking up every single day, um, Westbender, Hastings, um, Georgia to, uh, Annex. And I invite everybody who's opposed to this project to come and see. Everybody walks to school. I barely see any parent dropping off their kids in cars. We all live, we all choose this environment and this neighbourhood because we all like walking. And it's actually because of the environment. We're very conscious that we don't want to drive in cars. So we desperately need this school. And if you build it today, it's way, it's already too late. I mean, I'm really looking forward for my, uh, kids to enter grade three or four here. So I just wanted to call in and say that, uh, most of us, uh, people with kids in this neighbourhood, we desperately need a school. I actually had to wait two years, um, on a waitlist in Beishore Gardens for my older one, who's fourteen now, to just get into the daycare. We really need this spaces. So, yeah, that's it. So I'm just confused about all this. And everybody likes to walk here. I mean, that's the reason we live here. If we wanted to drive cars, we'd go to suburbs. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Um, I don't see any questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker, who's Vicky Wong, speaker number ninety-one.
Thank you.
Um, hello?
Hi there. Uh, you have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Vicky Wong. My family has lived in Coal Harbour for twenty years. My parents are now in their eighties, and I'm speaking for them. And I'm also speaking for some of the other seniors in our building. And I think first, it's really unfair for some of the other people to say that these are rich, selfish, old people. These are seniors who've worked their entire lives in Vancouver, and now they're spending their retirement years in a place that they're hoping is a quiet and safe neighbourhood. And some of the things that I'm going to say have already been said by many people already. But my parents and their friends, you know, they don't know how to tweet or Zoom. They're in their eighties, and they've asked me to call in just to be on the record. And the first thing on the record is to say that we're not against affordable housing, and we're certainly not against a school in Coal Harbour. What we are against is both of those things in this particular location, and that's really primarily because of the traffic impact. And I know that we're only supposed to be talking about the additional height of the project tonight, but I think it's important to vote objection, voice objection to the entire project because there was so much opposition back in March and in the last two days. And, you know, all of that, as other people have said, seemed to have been completely ignored by council. And I think that's important for the record to reflect. You know, I think that many of the speakers who've spoken tonight, who are in favour of the project, they don't actually live in Coal Harbour, and they're not going to be directly impacted by the traffic and the emissions that are going to be generated. You know, and maybe this project is going to have positive impact on the neighbourhood, but equally, it might have a negative impact. And we don't know that because we're rushing in to build. We haven't done a proper study. And the problem is that if there is negative impact, once this is built, it's irreversible, and it's going to change our neighbourhood forever. And the traffic study that we've seen so far, you know, we're not pulling numbers out of the sky. This is from a city traffic study, which says there's going to be over nine hundred additional cars in the area. And, you know, a number of people have said that that's not going to happen. People are going to walk. But, you know, this is a city study that said there's going to be more than nine hundred cars, and our streets here, they can't take that. I mean, please come down to Hastings and Broughton on a rush hour afternoon, like today in the long weekend, and see how many cars shortcut through our neighbourhood to get onto the Lions Gate Bridge. And that's going to be multiplied so many times every single day because of the school. I mean, we had somebody earlier who said that when it rains, he drives his kids just half a block or one block. So this is not a case where everybody's going to walk. This is a place where people are going to drive and there's going to be gridlock. And if you also look, Hastings Street, up one and a half blocks away, that's a dead end. Hastings Street ends there. And where the school ends in Broughton, that's also a dead end. So all these cars are going to be double-backing the way that they came, and everybody's going to be all stuck together. My major question for council with respect to this is, has anybody thought about how emergency vehicle traffic is going to be impacted with all this extra potential traffic in the area? How are ambulances and fire trucks going to get through? I mean, again, you know, I'm talking about seniors here, and this is a major issue for them, that emergency vehicles can come through. So finally, I just want to say, not only do we need to think about our children, of course, kids are important, but please, please don't forget the impact on this project on seniors either. You know, they've spent their entire lives building this city for us, and, you know, in, in their retirement days, they deserve to live in a safe and peaceful neighbourhood, you know, all in terms of traffic safety, air quality, and emergency vehicles access. So just please think of seniors as well.
Thank you. Uh, you do have a question from councillor Dejanova. Go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. I'm, I'm just wondering if you would consider the neighbourhood right now to be affordable?
Yes, I'm surrounded by affordable housing.
Okay. And can, can I just ask you sort of broadly for your definition of affordability? Do you think that, um, people who didn't have assets, who are looking to rent right now, uh, especially younger generations, would be able to live there along, aside from seniors, as you, you'd well mentioned?
Well, let me, let me tell you the people that I know in my building. Uh, most of the people I talk, you know, that are, actually, I mean, I lived up the street until COVID nineteen, and I came back here because my parents needed help, and so I moved into their building. And since I've been living in this building, I've met a lot of people here, and a lot of them are seniors. And these are people who used to be schoolteachers and nurses. And they're, you know, and, you know, it's true. They were able to afford this place because they bought in the nineties. But, you know, they never thought that the neighbourhood would change like this. And they never thought that, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to, you know, be, be living in a quiet place. Uh, I think renting here, right now, the rent, depending on how big your unit is, it's anywhere between two thousand and three thousand five hundred a month. So I think, you know, probably honestly, if you work in a restaurant, you might not be able to afford living here. But if you were, you know, working in an office, you probably could, especially if you have a roommate. That's what I did. I had a roommate.
Okay. And if you were a young family with a child that you had to put through, had to pay for them to go to childcare if you could find a spot, would, would you think that that's affordable right now for families in Coal Harbour?
You know, I don't, but first, let, let me go back to my original point, which is that I'm not against the daycare or a school or social housing. I'm against those things in this particular spot because of the traffic.
Okay. So you're not against them, but you're not, I, I had heard you say you weren't against them in that, in that spot, but you are against them in the spot that you're in right now.
No, no, I'm not against them in Coal Harbour. Believe me, my parents, my parents.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, let, let me be clear. You know, my, my parents spent their entire lives working for social housing.
I, I.
Okay, like they were, they were social workers. So this is not a case where.
My background is non-market housing, so I, I understand, and I'm just really trying to clarify.
Sorry, I'm just going to jump in here. This, you know.
My question, oh.
Councillor Dejanova, this should be, you know, um, not a debate, not a debate.
I'm asking a question, Mayor. I'm trying to focus the question, just as councillor Fry was allowed to thank people and you allowed him to do that.
Go ahead with your question.
Thank you. Um, uh, you had said that you are supportive of childcare and school in the neighbourhood. And I'm wondering, where do you think then it, it would more appropriately be in your neighbourhood, if not here, in Coal Harbour?
Well, first, first of all, I believe that somebody said that there was another site nearby on Denman about three speakers ago. So that's a possibility.
And, and.
Okay, but the second, but.
I'm sorry, I just have another question. I have limited time and, and I'm not trying to debate you. Again, I hate doing this rapid firing round of questions, but the mayor, mayor, fair enough, his chair is, is hurrying me along to do that. I appreciate that. So you've, you've outlined your points well, but I'm just wondering, you, you had said that you're not against this in your neighbourhood. You heard a few speakers ago. You also said this is being rushed along. We've heard that this is over twenty years in the making. Do you think that it's time to make a decision and move forward on where we should be locating this?
I believe that there needs to be a proper study done. I need, I believe there needs to be a proper traffic study. I think there needs to be proper debate, not on a telephone, but where people can actually go into City Hall under normal circumstances. And I think that this shouldn't be rushed. I don't know if this is the right time or the place, but we need to do it properly. And I feel like there hasn't been due process here, and that's probably the biggest problem in all of this. You know, and maybe a school is the right place for there, and maybe that we need to do another traffic study to make sure. But we don't know because none of that's been done. I mean, don't you believe in process, councillor?
I can't answer questions because it's a public hearing, but I thank you very much for, for answering my questions. And Mayor, I've just finished under ten seconds. I hope that's acceptable. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have come to the end of the five-minute period. Uh, thank you for calling in, speaker. I don't see any other questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next, uh, speaker, who is, um, speaker ninety-two, Howard Pontius.
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Yes, my name's Howard Pontius. I'm a resident of Coal Harbour. I'm opposed to this, uh, uh, building being put here. Uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to it in principle, but in this location. My principal reason for contacting or calling in tonight is to invite the decision-makers to come down to the location. They, if they came down here, they would see that this is an extremely densely populated area and that this little piece of property represents an oasis in the sea of concrete. It's my view that you don't have to build a building on every single piece of property that is available. We need to have some vision here. I would invite you to hearken back to Lord Stanley, who had the vision to create Stanley Park. This is a much smaller area, but it would be very nice to keep this breathing space in Coal Harbour because there's no going back. If you put another concrete building in this location, we'll have a sea of concrete even denser than we already have, and we don't need more density. We need this breathing space, and I'd invite you to come down and look at the area for yourself before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I don't see any, uh, questions for you, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you, though, for calling in this evening. Uh, let's see here, council. Check on my list. Okeydoke. Uh, we've got, uh, speaker number ninety-four, Elena Kabulia. Elena Kabulia, speaker number ninety-four.
Yes.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Um, I'm not going to take five minutes. Um, I'm just, um, I just want to say that I do oppose to this building being built here in that particular location. And, um, I must say that I was very surprised by, um, how, uh, the councillor, I'm sorry, I didn't get, uh, the name, um, approached the situation when, uh, we had the number ninety-one speaker. Uh, basically, the councillor was, uh, asking that speaker to justify herself and her parents, how they can afford to live here or, um, the affordability in the area. It, it was just like, I, I must say that it threw me off. Uh, I was very shocked by, by that attitude. And, uh, I don't think I'm going to say all I wanted to say before because it seems to me that, um, the people that are making the decision, uh, they already, um, have already decided about this. And it's very sad to see that. It's very disappointing. Uh, and, uh, I really don't think that the owners should be on the residence that live here to justify why the, the building is not a, a good fit for this particular location. And I think it's the city who builds this project with the taxpayers' money, who has to justify it and actually consult the residents in a meaningful way about what do they want to do with this beautiful piece of property, which is right now a parking lot. I, I think that we are entitled to be consulted in a meaningful way about what's happening in our ne- neighbourhood. And this particular piece of property could be just another park in this beautiful area near the seawall, and it's, it's calling for a park. It, it's not calling for a building of any kind of thing, no matter what the purpose of the project is. And with my, in my respectful view, and I do respect the council, councillors, and I do respect the, the mayor and your decision process, but if it's quasi-judicial, then it better be objective and not pre-decided, um, and, uh, basically marketed, uh, to, to us like this. I think we should be consulted in a meaningful way, and, um, and that's all I have to say. And I think it's, it's a rough project. It's not supported by studies, and it's in a, in a very bad location for a school. They desperately need a school in West End. That's very apparent from every speaker from that area. And why is not the school built there? I don't know. Uh, why is, for example, on Melville, we had a, a parcade which was, uh, converted? I suppose it was city property. It was sold to a developer, and now it's, they are building the stack, a huge building which will add to the density of the location. Why not, uh, to build a school in a, in a, uh, in that area or other areas? The, the city can be resourceful and find, uh, properties that are available, and they can change the design and transform them into schools and daycare and social housing and everything. We are not opposed to social housing, and we are not opposed to schools or daycare. This is a misunderstanding. Everybody thinks that just because we are opposed to a building in this location, we don't want schools at social housing. We do. It's just that don't waste a piece of land that is so beautiful to, to build another concrete building. That's my, what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I, I don't see any, uh, questions for you, so thank you, uh, for calling in and sharing your views tonight. I'm going to move to the next speaker.
Point of parliamentary procedure, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Uh, it was insinuated that, uh, councillor or, uh, councillor members. It is, it is, uh, because it was insinuated that council members had made up their minds, um.
It's not a.
Prior to hearing this, so I'm just asking you, council members are not to make up their minds. They're to make considerations of all state comments. Is that correct?
It's not really a point of procedure, councillor Dejanova.
Oh, so it's not a point of procedure if we're supposed to keep an open mind? That's not a point of procedure.
Nope, not a point of procedure. That's just a question on, uh, a, a motion or a, um.
So where would you like me to ask that, Mayor?
I think you could do it in debate after we've closed the questions.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, okay, council, uh, we're moving on to our next speaker, who is, um, Jeremy Shrag, speaker number ninety-five.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I am councillor for Abkar Properties LLC. Abkar is the owner of the property, uh, strata property in the building, um, across the street, across Broughton Street, from the proposed development. Um, my client is opposed to the development in its current form, uh, although not necessarily to the development in toto. Um, I don't intend to repeat, uh, the substantive submissions that have been made earlier. Um, I intend to focus my submissions tonight on a question of some procedural matters. Um, my client has commenced judicial review of the decision of the Development Permit Board. I don't propose to discuss that as a matter of before the courts, but many of the same concerns raised by my client in the judicial review proceeding are apparent in the proceeding before your worship, uh, tonight and yesterday. Um, first of all, I, I would, in my respectful view, um, the, I believe there was a question the other day about whether or not if the develop, if the council doesn't pass the bylaw that's being, that's before tonight, uh, the development can just proceed as is. And, and in my respectful view, that, that's not the case. Uh, it's clear from the development permit that there is a condition that council pass the bylaw as suggested by. that there is a condition that council pass the bylaw as suggested by, by staff. I would also note that there, I gather that there've been a number of times where speakers have sought to raise issues and concerns with the development generally, and those speakers have been shut down because it didn't necessarily directly deal with the bylaw question. However, I would note that in the summary and recommendation published in advance of this meeting, this council is being asked to recommend by resolution the form of the development in toto. So my view to the extent that people have been denied the ability to speak on issues that go beyond the four corners of the intended bylaw, they've been denied procedural fairness, and that, I think, ties into the general tenor of my comments. That, um, you know, your, the worship has mentioned on several occasions that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and, and that is quite correct. And as a result of that, and as, uh, councillor Dejenoa just mentioned, um, all councillors must come in with an open mind, cannot have come to any preconceived notions, and able to execute your function properly, in my respectful view, you need to be advised properly, and this is the crux of my submission tonight, that in my respectful view, having heard the other submissions of the various speakers, read the reports provided by staff, and listened to the questions provided by, uh, asked by members of council, uh, it's difficult to conclude that council is being advised properly. And that's not on council. I don't suggest for a moment that council has done anything wrong as a whole or the individual members, but in my respectful view, you have not been advised properly for the simple reason that there's a substantial conflicts of interest in this proceeding. Um, now, of course, the city has every ability to develop its own land. That's, that's not controversial. But it has to do so in a manner that provides procedural fairness to the citizens of the city who will be affected by it. And for that to happen, the city has to manage the conflicts of interest, and in my view, the city has not done that. And as a result, um, this entire proceeding is infected by those conflicts. And essentially, as sitting a tribunal, the individual members of council uh, have not been advised properly, and in my respectful view at present are not able to properly execute their duty to provide an open-minded, fair and, uh, uh, determination of the issues here. Now, I'll just close by noting that, um, if nothing else, the issues around traffic and the, um, the draft TAM study, which was withheld prior to, at least immediately prior to the Development Permit Board hearing, and the fact that there hasn't been a final study executed and issued, uh, calls into question the council's ability to make an informed decision about the safety of this project. And although I appreciate council has asked questions of laypeople about how they can manage traffic issues, including PAC presidents and PAC liaisons, uh, that, in my respectful view, is not sufficient. That until the city is, has, and council has a proper final TAMs, I don't see how it could possibly make a decision, having been advised properly as to...
Thank you so much. That's the five minutes, but you do have a question from councillor Carr. Councillor Carr, please go ahead. Up to five minutes for, for questions.
Yes, actually, I do not have a question for the speaker, Mayor. I have a question for you. It's a point of, and it is a point of parliamentary procedure.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Speaker, then, uh, that's it. There are no questions for you. I'm gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, councillor Carr, go ahead with your question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this speaker has just raised issues related to, uh, potential conflict of interest, litigation, and other matters that I believe are in-camera matters, and that I would appreciate having advice from staff on, uh, before we proceed with this hearing and any decision. But I am seeking your,
Yeah.
your opinion and your decision about whether or not the points being raised are worthy of us, um, considering in terms, uh, are you considering in terms of moving us to an in-camera situation with staff available?
Uh, councillor Carr, in turn said, again, this is the first time we've come across this, so the two points the speaker raised was that, first, there's other pending litigation apparently, um, and that would be outside this process. It would apply, in my mind, uh, whatever we do in this situation. So it seems to be, um, you know, again, it's hearsay because we actually don't know if the person on the phone is the person on the phone, uh, you know, actually representing anybody, so, uh, there may be, um, you know, so I, I wouldn't worry about that, and, and, uh, I'm sure the city management team would alert us if there was an issue because they're listening at this point. On the second, uh, the procedural issue, uh, th- this has been raised in the past, that people think that the process is, is not fair, and in my mind, uh, that's also something that could be challenged in court, so I would think that we don't really need an any, uh, in-camera briefing if, uh, but staff are listening at this point, and I'd, um, I think we should proceed unless there's some concern by staff. Um, and, uh, maybe I'll ask the city manager or, or the, uh, uh, person in charge of the planning team this evening if they have any concerns with us proceeding at this stage.
Thank you.
Is a staff person on the line there?
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Therese O'Donnell, the general manager of Planning, Development and Urban Design.
Okay.
Play, and, um, I don't see Mr. Mulray on the call, uh, just at the moment, but
Okay.
uh, planning staff has no concerns with proceeding with the hearing tonight.
That's what I thought. Okay, thanks. Does that satisfy you, uh, councillor Carr?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. I see councillor Dejenoa and councillor Kirby Young on the lines. Are these, are also a point of procedure or something similar? Councillor Dejenoa?
Just straight to the question. Should we or should we not consider the comments of the speaker that we just heard as evidence? Uh, pending litigation specifically is a note I have, so I should not consider those. I should take them off of my note sheet here.
Yes, I would think that. I, I think there's just like any other-
Thank you.
Any other testimony that you've heard this evening is that, um, you can weigh whatever you like, but we've checked with planning staff.
Actually, I can't. I have to consider public comments, but if you tell me that not, I should not consider them as chair, I will not consider that, so.
I'm not, uh, I'm not asking that you strike, uh, the comments from your memory, councillor Dejenoa. I'm just saying that, uh, they, um, they are outside the concern of this, uh, proceeding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'd also like to follow up on councillor Carr's, um, raised point of procedure and ask more explicitly, because my understanding is that we do
Sorry, you're breaking up-
have legal staff available. Sorry, is that any, is that any better, Mayor?
A little better. Um, I, I have, uh, I have asked the senior planning staff. They have said they don't have- Uh, sure, you've been breaking up there.
I have a question.
It's been hard to, uh-
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Let me try again, just to make sure I, I give you the full question.
Sure.
Um, I'm wondering, um, because I understand that legal staff are available for public hearings, if we could have a response from legal on that also, that, um, from that point of expertise, not from just from planning, but from legal, with respect to any legal implications of council making a decision tonight?
Sure. Uh, how questions to, uh, you know, staff usually work is I just generally, uh, refer them to the most senior staff person, and they decide who these are sent to, but I do see Mr., sorry, the city manager is on the line, uh, so if you have anything to add on this, uh, point of procedure, that would be welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Excuse me. Thanks, Mayor Stewart. Sorry about that. I was falling, uh, online and not on WebEx, so thanks for giving me the opportunity to get on. So the, um, yeah, there is a judicial review has been indicated, but, um, as, as you've heard, and I would concur with the advice you received from our director of planning, that, that, that issue does not pertain to the matter in front of you this evening. Um, have conferred with our legal services team, and they would concur with that as well, so, um, you, you are in a position, in our view as staff, you are in a position to proceed with the hearing this evening.
Everybody okay now? Okay, great. Thanks so much. Uh, just a few more speakers right here, council. Um, we have, uh, next, uh, Speaker number 96, Trevor Cole.
Mayor Stewart, um, that speaker has disconnected, so we have no further speakers on the line.
Okay, I can't remember. Am I on the second call for speakers or the third, uh, or the third?
You're on the second call, Mayor Stewart.
Oh, hey, council, I'm gonna make a second call for speakers. If, uh, anybody would like to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, uh, code 89327 pound. Uh, and that number's on Twitter and on the live stream, and I'll just ask the clerks, is there anybody on the line now?
Just double checking.
Yeah.
And no.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, I'm gonna call a third time then, same contact number, same access number. And now we're gonna take a five-minute break. It is 8:20. We'll come back at 8:25 to see if there are any other speakers to this item. I see you in five minutes, council. Anybody else on the line?
Mayor Stewart, yes, we have another speaker on the line, Speaker 97.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, I'm gonna call Speaker number 97 then, Asajh Carson. Speaker number 97, are you there? Asajh Carson?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you for your time. My wife and I lived in downtown Vancouver, but when we started a family, we moved because of the school situation. I strongly support the new school, along with the 20 additional units that are being debated tonight. Uh, frankly, I'm shocked that the proposal is not for a much taller building, considering the area, uh, and the lineups for housing. It seems like a wasted opportunity to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. I don't see any questions for you. Um, so I'm gonna ask the clerks again. Is there anybody else on the line to speak to this item?
Just double checking, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we have another speaker on the line.
Okay.
Abby E. Sharman.
Great. Uh, Abby Sharman, please, uh, go ahead. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
All right.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, please go.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Am I audible?
Yes, you're, you're-
This, we're in the Coal Harbour, and we moved to the 451, 491, 499 Denman Street. And that is far greater the, of the space to make this project happen. The 480 Broton Street site is way too small for this large and ambitious project. The city of Vancouver owns 451, 491, 499 Denman Street is flat, wide, and more spacious, comparable to all the schools in Yerdon and Falls Creek. But the school and social housing and daycare on that side, hello, yeah, on that side, 480, Broton Street is too small and host a huge amount of issues. The city of Vancouver should not fast-track this project on this site. They have waited 26 years, but they can't wait. I do not support this project at 480 Broton Street. Bottom line, we need a hard-tested concrete fact. The cost of the judicial process is process that should be followed for decision-making based on hard facts, tested proven studies, but not simply verbal statements. This project decision has been based on. God bless the council who approves the project, which does not even have concrete steps, how it can be done, how it let alone the budget. Happy Canada Day, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, phoning in this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so that, uh, will just conclude your time there, and I'll ask the clerk again. Is there anybody else on the line?
Double checking, Mayor Stewart. And I'm getting no, no one else on the line.
Okay, council, then I'm gonna close the, uh, speakers list, and as no or few, uh, comments received on this item after 5:00 PM today, uh, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. Um, and again, as the staff team are the applicant here, uh, 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 do we have any closing comments from the staff team?
Hi, this is Lex from Rezoning. Um, thank you, Mayor and council, and all members of the public who came out to speak to this application. Um, I'd simply like to reiterate that staff recommend approval of this CD1 amendment to increase the residential floor area, the number of social housing units, and building height. The proposed uses for this site have been anticipated in official development plan since 1990 and the original CD1 bylaw, approved in 1996. And the additional 20 units provides an opportunity to deliver much-needed social housing, while also creating unique synergies with the other building uses in a neighborhood that is, uh, highly walkable, uh, and rich in amenities. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, for those closing comments. Um, so, council, do we have any questions for staff? If so, uh, put your name on the list. There you go, councillor Dejenoa. Up to, uh, five minutes. Please, uh, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I'm just gonna start a bit of a firing round. I'm wondering, how affordable would this housing have been if it was built, uh, during the previous-
Thank you, uh, Councilor Donato, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor, and, um, I, I just wanted to follow up, um, to staff with some questions around the, um. Transportation concerns that we heard from, uh, residents and, and obviously one transportation assessment study has been undertaken. Um, could you clarify? I thought I heard during the presentation, or maybe it subsequently in questions after. Um, that there would need to be a further study or an update of that study. And could staff just speak to that, given the, the number of concerns that we heard from, uh, local residents?
Yeah, hi, Lisa Morashida here, transportation engineer from Engineering Services. Pretty standard practice for us is for us to receive a draft version of the study, along with the application for the development permit. At that point, staff review that draft, we provide comments and conditions, and we'll work together with the applicant to address those comments. And then after a few iterations, a finalized report is required to be submitted as, as a condition of the issuance of the development permit.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that helps clarify process for me. And, and, and would it be fair, uh, we heard concerns on, on one hand from, um, around vehicles. But we heard from, uh, residents, particularly, uh, parents whose kids already go to, uh, Lord Roberts or potentially will go to Coal Harbour. At the swing space, um, that, um, they had some good suggestions around, um, you know, lengthening the light crossings. And, um, speed humps and other elevated crossings, so on. Is that something staff will take into consideration through this public hearing? As part of, uh, planning for pedestrian and cycling safety in the area?
Yeah, certainly. So through, through what we heard at the hearing today, as well as, uh, through the applicant's transportation consultant. That sort of information is exactly what we're gonna be looking for in the finalized, uh, transportation study.
Okay, um. And, and just, um, one, uh, this is on the housing side. I wanted to ask this the other day around the, um. Uh, the additional, the proposed height increase and the additional, I think it's twenty units is. Um, one, is there a potential for getting more than thirty percent, um, uh, at Hills? And also just, um, the impetus for, uh, proposing, um, twenty additional units and, and sort of where that originated from.
Hi, Councilor, Dan Garrison, I'll, I'll chime in on this. Um, so i- in terms of the, uh, the impetus for the, the additional units. Uh, it really was looking at, uh, the, the viability of the project and the design of the units. The original, uh, official development plan and zoning limited the number of units to forty in forty-five thousand square feet. Uh, approximately of development, so that, that's an average of about eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet per unit, all family units. Which is a very inefficient, uh, building to build and, and doesn't really, uh, align with today's standards for unit sizes. So, um, part of the increase in units is just a more efficient unit size. The average proposed right now is, in the project, is about nine hundred and eighty. Square feet per unit, uh, which is still higher than our norm, and that's because, um, of the higher proportion of family-oriented units we've retained in the project. Um, so between the efficiency of the units, increasing the efficiency of the building, which is very important in rental housing performers. Or rental housing operating budgets, uh, we also managed to, or the, the propos- the proposal to add a little bit of additional height is. Is there to add a few more units to help make with the viability of the project, um, overall. It is a fairly costly, um, construction project because of the concrete, uh, form and because of the. Um, and because of, uh, the design of the building, the passive house and all those things, those obviously help with operating costs. But, uh, the addition of the units helps to make the project, uh, round out the viability. Uh, in terms of affordability, all that will be brought back to council, uh, at a later date in terms of decisions that council may make in terms of. Um, uh, at the point of selecting an operator and, and leasing to, uh, make decisions around deeper affordability.
Okay, can I ask one last question? You just reminded me, glad you brought it up around the cost of construction related to concrete. And any opportunity, um, to look at, um, mass timber or other options? As we're seeing now, there's prototypes for up to twenty, twenty-one stories, twenty-two stories mass timber, and whether, uh, or is that already part of? Um, I just don't know, uh, the, the, the construction around this.
Just at five minutes, so a quick answer, please.
Sure, I mean, we'll, we'll always look at the most cost-effective form of, of construction, ca- considering it's a complex project with the school, the childcare and the housing. Um, I think that's where we've landed on the current, uh, concept of, of concrete, but we'll always look at more cost-effective ways. As we proceed through the project towards the development permit stages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Councilor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, so I'm, I'm just sort of sequencing, um. The process here in my mind and referencing back in terms of the November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty council. Decision, um, which was at that point was a policy decision, and the rec- one of the, uh, recommendations asked council to. Direct staff to proceed with, um. The components necessary, uh, in order to execute and deliver on the Coal Harbour School, Childcare and Affordable Housing Project, defined as the project. And in that report, it contemplated sixty units at that time, which is what, the same as what we're looking at today. My understanding, so we're not. There's no difference in the number here today, is that correct? Just one second.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you. Could you please, uh, repeat your question, Councilor Kirby Young?
I'll just stop your clock. You did, you did cut out there for a second, Councilor Kirby Young, so if you just wanna paraphrase.
Yep.
Councilor Kirby Young, you are correct.
So in another, I was referencing, okay, thank you. So there's, so sixty units is approved in the council policy report, November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, and sixty units now. And while the report, that report did not reference height specifically, there was a diagram in that report that showed the form of the building. And the number of floors of residential approximately six above, um, sort of the school, et cetera. Is that still the same?
Again, this is Teresa O'Donnell, yes, that is all the same.
Okay, and the other component, I wonder if you can advise here, just so I'm clear on procedure, because I think it's really helpful for. Me to understand and also the public. There was a, a schedule as appendix A in that November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty report. That spoke to the D P submission and, and the expectation there, but it made no reference to a public hearing. Um, requirement or otherwise. I wonder if you can just clarify for me why it did not.
Councilwoman, I am not familiar with that report, so I'll have to ask Paul if he, I mean, not Paul, um, Dan, if he can respond to that. Um, it.
Sure.
It may have been just that they were unaware a text amendment was necessary. But, um, I'll have to see if Dan can answer that question. Dan, do you have the answer to that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Teresa, I wasn't involved in, in that report, uh, either, so I'm, maybe we can get a response to that. Just in the next moment and, and, uh.
Sure, that's no problem. In the meantime, I can ask another question, and, and the height is this, is anticipated for the form of the building. It's to anticipate to be the same as what council approved in the policy report is what we are being asked to. Um, amend in the bylaw tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That is very helpful. Um, I'm gonna leave it there for now, save some time. Thanks, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Um, Councilor Carr, up to five.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Um, yeah, my first, um, question has to deal with, uh, one of the point that was raised by. A speaker about a false traffic report. Do staff have any, uh, response to that, um, that, that statement? That, that there is a false traffic report attached to this?
Thank you for your question, Councilor Carr. This is Lisa Morashida, transportation engineer from Engineering Services. Um, I'm not sure about the categorization of the report as false. It was draft. Um, as is standard procedure for all development permit applications, is that a draft report is submitted with the development permit application? And that report gets finalized prior to the issuance of the developments permit.
Okay, okay, that's, I, and, and, um, staff are satisfied with the, the traffic report that has been attached to this. I gather, else you wouldn't be giving it to us, but just need confirmation publicly. Uh, knowing it's draft, okay, great. Um, there were a number of speakers, many, um, that talked about increased traffic. Due to this project. I wonder if staff have any comments to make about, I mean, they also mentioned how it was related to also just a general rise in traffic. Um, at rush hour, but can staff comment on the anticipated increase in traffic from, uh, the addition of, um, these twenty units? And the extra story on, on the building?
Certainly, the additional twenty units of social housing are expected to bring in less than ten additional vehicle trips to the neighborhood.
On a daily basis?
Uh, during a, a peak hour, we'll typically look at vehicle trips on a, a peak hour in the morning and a peak in the afternoon. So during those peak times, uh, we would expect less than ten, probably five to nine.
Five, five to nine, okay, thank you. Um. The, um, uh, it wasn't raised that much by speakers tonight, but we received a lot of letters on this subject. Uh, by council, and many of them questioned the height, and, um, in particular that it was three and a half stories higher. Um, than, uh, than the original, um, approved project. So I wonder, you have, you've explained this once, but just to affirm, and in response to very specific questions raised in letters to council on this subject. How much higher in actual fact is this building? And why is there the, um, the supposition, it stated in the report, that there is a much higher elevation being talked about?
Hello, uh, councillor, thank you for the question. This is Charlotte Black with, uh, the Urban Design Group. So it's a fair question, because although staff are recommending amendment of the bylaw for an amount around eight meters. The physical increase in height of the building is less, and this is laid out, uh, roughly in page eight of the rezoning report. But to summarize, the method of calculating the height has changed, so that the base plane is lower than it was originally. That's not a difference in, in physical dimensions, that's just a difference in calculation. The, the, uh, other substantial change is that the building has an additional story. Um, the main level of the building has, uh, been increased slightly in order to deal with, uh, sea level requirements. And there's a no- a number of other minor changes, but the result is the building is four point oh-nine meters taller physically. In other words, a person who is looking at the building at its roof level, eye level with the roof. Would perceive an increase in height of thirteen point four feet, and that's, that's noted in the report. That's also, uh, uh, noted in the development permit board when, uh, the same project went through. So, um, it's unfortunate that the city of Vancouver's method of calculating height is as complex as it is. And I sympathize with the speakers who've called in and, and tried to parse this out, but a- as the report notes, the increase in height is thirteen point four feet. Physically.
Right, thank you. Um, and, uh, thank you very much, that's, that was very clear. And, um, can you just, one last question, I don't have much time left, but the sea level requirement, um, that interests me, is that because of the. Um, recalculations we make from time to time on the potential rise of sea level due to climate change?
Uh, that's a great broader question. I believe that the specific answer is that there is a regulatory requirement. Um, that is now in effect, which has raised the elevation of the main floor from four point five meters elevation to four point eight meters elevation. Uh, on the subject of exactly how that increase was calculated, I might, uh, invite, uh, staff. To comment if there's somebody with more expertise on this point. Unfortunately, I, I can't personally speak to the, the, the method of calculating sea level rise.
I'm gonna move on to Councilor Boyle, against. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. I, uh, actually, all of my questions were, um, asked by other councillors, so I am happy to move the recommendations in the report. If that was the appropriate time.
Okay, uh, Councilor Carr, you are on the list, but you've used your full five minutes.
I'm just gonna speak to the mo- motion.
For a second, uh, second of my councillor DeGenova, so I am gonna put, um, move over to the main queue, councillor Boyle, you moved the motion. So if you want to speak to it, you go ahead, and please, everybody else who wants to speak to this, put your help on the queue, councillor Carr, put you on. If anybody else wants to speak, there we go, uh, councillor. Okay, great. Um, there were a number of speakers, many, um that talked about increased traffic. Due to this project. I wonder if staff have any comments to make about, I mean, they also mentioned how it was related to. Also just a general rise in traffic um at rush hour, but can staff comment on the anticipated increase in traffic? From uh the addition of um these twenty units and the extra story on on the building.
Certainly, the additional twenty units of social housing are expected to bring in less than ten additional vehicle trips to the neighborhood.
On a daily basis?
Uh during a a peak hour, we'll typically look at vehicle trips on a a peak hour in the morning and a peak in the afternoon. So during those peak times, uh we would expect less than ten, probably five to nine.
Five five to nine. Okay, thank you. Um. The um uh it wasn't raised that much by speakers tonight, but we received a lot of letters on this subject. At by council and many of them questioned the height and um in particular that it was three and a half stories higher. Um than uh than the original um approved project. So I wonder, you have you've explained this once, but just to affirm. And in response to their specific questions raised in letters to council on this subject. How much higher in actual fact is this building? And why is there the um the uh supposition? It stated in the report that there is a much higher elevation being talked about.
Hello councillor, thank you for the question. This is Charlotte Black with uh the Urban Design Group. So it's a fair question because although staff are recommending amendment of the bylaw. For an amount around eight meters, the physical increase in height of the building is less. And this is laid out uh roughly in page eight of the rezoning report, but to summarize. The method of calculating the height has changed so that the base plane is lower than it was originally. That's not a difference in in physical dimensions, that's just a difference in calculation. The the uh other substantial change is that the building has an additional story. Um, the main level of the building has uh been increased slightly in order to deal with uh sea level requirements. And there's a number of other minor changes, but the result is the building is four point oh nine meters taller physically. In other words, a person who is looking at the building at its roof level, eye level with the roof. Would perceive an increase in height of thirteen point four feet. And that's that's noted in the report. That's also uh noted in the development permit board when uh the same project went through. So um it's unfortunate that the city of Vancouver's method of calculating height is as complex as it is. And I sympathize with the speakers who've called in and and tried to parse this out, but as the report notes, the increase in height is thirteen point four feet. Physically.
Right, thank you. Um and uh thank you very much. That's that was very clear. And um can you just one last question? I don't have much time left, but the sea level requirement um that interests me, is that because of the. Um recalculations we make from time to time on the potential rise of sea level due to climate change?
Uh, that's a great broader question. I believe that the specific answer is that there is a regulatory requirement. Um that is now in effect, which has raised the elevation of the main floor from four point five meters elevation to four point eight meters elevation. Uh on the subject of exactly how that increase was calculated, I might uh invite uh staff. To comment if there's somebody with more expertise on this point. Unfortunately, I I can't personally speak to the.
And we are.
Method of calculating sea level rise.
I'm gonna move on to councillor Boyle. Thanks.
Um thanks mayor. I uh actually all of my questions were um asked by other councillors, so I am happy to move the. Recommendations in the report if that was the appropriate time.
Okay, uh councillor Carr, you are on the list, but you've used your full five minutes.
I'm just gonna speak to the motion and.
It's for a second, uh second by councillor Dejana, so I am gonna put um move over to the main queue councillor Boyle, you moved the motion. So if you want to speak to it, you go ahead and please everybody else who wants to speak to this, put your. Help on the queue councillor Carr, put you on. If anybody else wants to speak, there we go. Uh councillor Boyle, please go ahead, head up the five.
Thanks mayor. Um so I I wanna start by, I'll start by by thanking all of the speakers, as I know um all of council does. Um, I am conscious particularly of what a walkable, rollable and vikeable neighborhood this already is. Particularly as we heard from many parents in the neighborhood. Uh it's an example of a complete community and services like a school and childcare and social housing. Make it an even more complete community. I also want to recognize the significant amount of time that families in Coal Harbour and the West End have already been waiting for this new school. And we heard that too uh from many people and and I know a a number of us on council have been hearing that. Um for years and years uh as well, the school is badly needed. Uh and social housing is badly needed too in every neighborhood of the city. Um, I I wanted to speak to the transportation concerns to say. Uh that I absolutely feel we should continue to make transportation and housing decisions that reduce reliance on private. Vehicles for all of the reasons that speakers uh for and against this proposal spoke to. And there is huge benefit to all of us when we uh have cleaner air and safer streets and less noise. Um because we're moving away from our reliance on private vehicles. The recent school streets pilot project. As again, we heard about from speakers is a great example and I was glad to visit all three pilot sites of it across the city. Um and I'm sure there are lessons that we can implement as that project expands, including hopefully at the school when it's built. Uh and um I'm I'm sure councillor Carr will speak to that as well. Uh, one of the things uh I've been thinking a lot about in hearing from all of the speakers on this proposal is how. Uh how absolutely important it is uh that Vancouver be a city that works for families. It's important not just for those families, for those of us with young kids, but for all of us. I hope that when I am a senior, I am in a community that has plenty of children around as well and that I can hear them. Uh safely walking and running around um and uh and making all the delightful noise that they make. Um in it as part of my community. Um being a place that works for families is a is a very important central indicator. To the health of a community. Uh and I think this project will um like I said, benefit families. Um and also uh benefit the whole community. Uh and so I I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you so much. Uh councillor Carr up to five minutes.
Yes, uh thanks mayor. I do have an amendment that I have circulated.
Okay.
I'm gonna move me to amendment queue, I'll speak to it. Council does have.
We need a seconder in this uh forum, so.
Second councillor Kerby Young.
Hey councillor Kerby Young, I'm gonna move us over to amendment queue now and councillor uh Carr, you have the floor for up to five minutes.
Great, thank you. Um my amendment really does rise um out of the fact that I I really did listen to the speakers. The vast majority of whom uh raised issues around traffic and traffic congestion in this neighborhood. Um so my amendment is um and and because understanding that the applicant um has a a draft plan only in place around traffic management. That uh but is required by the end of this process to have a a finalized plan. My my amendment is that the applicant provide a finalized. Transportation assessment and management study report that includes measures from the school streets program. And the climate emergency action plans active transportation objectives. Uh we did hear speakers um from uh Lord uh Roberts School that actually. Uh talked about the um uh the the incredible um percentage of. I think it was over seventy-five percent of families and childrens that actually don't take cars. And to the school, but instead use active transportation. They they walk or they roll or they cycle. Um and uh and in fact, there was another speaker very near the end who I also, who was from the other side, um from the. Um from the Coal Harbour side, walking across Georgia to Lord Roberts, who actually said that they also, her family also walks there. So I think that there is already an incredible um uh percentage of people. Families with children in the West End who walk. I also happen to know that over fifty percent of people who live in the Wacken West End walk to work. This is of course pre-GOFA when people were walking uh to places of employment um in office buildings downtown. But it is a very, very significantly strong neighborhood in terms of alternate um means of transportation. That are um that are non-vehicleer. So um this is just to assure um everyone and including myself. That that um final study will include the measures um from the school streets program. Which was a pilot program between the school board and the city of Vancouver, uh with the support of the local parents advisory committees. And families um to uh to have virtual um zero car transportation. To the door of the school unless of course there are um uh important needs um related to uh to the inability. To walk, ride or roll. Um and uh and that achieved an incredible reduction. Uh and uh in in any car use, which was already minimal. Um so I'm really hopeful that this study will. Will really produce some uh some strong evidence around how we as a city can plan. Uh and 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 can be incorporated into the projects um being developed, the methods in order to achieve that kind of. The zero emission transportation and lack of congestion.
Okay, thank you. Uh there are others who want to speak to this councillor Dejana, about the five minutes on this amendment to the uh to the submitted report. Sorry, you might be on mute.
Thanks, I'm hoping I won't need that much time.
Okay, go ahead.
Here I have a point of information.
Okay. Sure.
As to whether or not this would already be a requirement in an undertaking under the rezoning moving forward. The traffic management study.
Okay, uh staff on this one, is this already a requirement?
Thank you for your question, Lisa Moore, she'd hear from uh transportation. The finalized report, yes, is a is already a condition. Um but the specific inclusions about the the school streets, that would be um an unusual direction for us to take through through that report.
And uh just to follow up to that, yeah, mayor, if you'll allow, I'm just wondering why that would be an unusual direction.
I, the the program, it was new this year, so it's something that we we just piloted this year. So it's it's unusual in that we haven't done it before, but not that it's it's out of line. It's certainly something that we could include in that finalized report.
Because of the pilot, would you be doing this already?
Um, not not necessarily. I think the the purpose of the pilot was to test out, I think we tried three schools this year. And so staff will be looking at the experiences that we learned from this year and applying those to how we could expand the program in the future. So this this direction here would would apply that to this school.
Okay, and then looking at the amendment that was sent by councillor Carr to us at seven oh eight PM here, I think that's the the right amendment. Maybe it's not.
It's on the screen.
I understand, I'm I'm just making sure I have the right version mayor. Um.
It's on the.
I only said one.
Speaking to the chair, thanks. Um I think it, yes, it was at seven oh eight PM. I'm I'm just wondering if uh. Would would climate already come into this under the Greenest City Plan? Would that be a consideration that we would take as counsel? And and would staff already have those policies considered in this? I'm just wondering if that that's already being considered.
Councillor Dejana, could you please repeat the question?
I'm wondering if uh staff would be undertaking all of the work in this amendment anyways.
We should have uh Lisa or Lon uh respond to that, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh uh the majority of our work now is is really defined by the cloud emergency action plan that was approved in November. And so that really does influence pretty much everything that engineering service or transportation is working on. Um like I noted, the school street one might be uh is a bit new, but I'll defer to one if you'd like to add to that.
It was specifically about the climate emergency action plan piece because I'd already asked about traffic management, thank you.
Uh Lon Leclerc, general manager of engineering services. So I do want to say that uh there's many years to happen between now and can the opening of that school. And uh so things that are currently pilots will become a a normal form of practice. Things that we haven't imagined yet will be developed and these would all be incorporated uh for opening day. So um all of those um initiatives that we're that are underway right now and between now and opening day. Are things that we would consider uh implementing on opening day.
Thanks, that's very helpful.
Thank you very much. Uh let's see here, we've got councillor Kerby Young up next for up to five.
Yeah, I also have a point of information through you to staff if I could.
Sure.
Um and that's. Just um I'm just wondering in terms of the specifics of this site on Brown and considering residents needing to access in and out. Um if staff would perceive this to be directive, that it means that it is asking specifically to include. The measures from the slow streets um versus. Uh some other alternatives that could be considered, for example, I heard from a speaker about the options such as raised street bumps or street bulges. Like, in other words, is this too prescriptive? Um and wouldn't staff need some flexibility to sort of assess the site and determine if. It was a closure for slow street for school versus some of the other options and alternatives that still allowed residents egress and ingress out of. The nearby buildings. Just wondering if you see this as specifically directive that you have to include a slow street? Or would have concern that you'd actually want to study the best options?
Thank you for your question. Go ahead Lon.
No, you go ahead.
Um I I interpret this direction as something that we should be exploring and studying through the transportation assessment and management study. Um there are a number of different measures, as you noted, that we could take. Um traffic calming, speed humps, some of those things already exist in the neighborhood. So I I don't perceive this direction to be specifically to close Broughton as part of a school street um program.
Okay, so, thank you. So mayor, um for clarification purposes, I'd like to propose an amendment to the amendment, which I've each just emailed.
Okay. While I need it, first somebody has to second it and we kind of need to see what it is first. Um. So if the clerks could just pull up, if you've sent it to the clerks, clerks can pull up the amendment to the amendment and then we can. See if we get a seconder for it.
I'll second it, councillor Carr.
Okay, I haven't read it yet, so I'll uh I'll put us on the queue. Uh councillor Kerby Young, if you you've moved this, so if you want to. More time to speak to it, I'll just put you on the queue and away you go, the five.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's a relatively simple amendment and just understanding that um I think that the intent is there, but wanting to provide flexibility to staff. It just adds some additional um words that sort of say includes consideration of, uh which additional words there of measures and adds such as, but not limited to. The school streets program, the climate emergency actions plan, the active transportation objectives. And then it adds language at the end as well as other options such as raised street bumps or street bulges. And I just wanted to be clear in terms of giving the um flexibility to our professional staff to recommend what they feel are their best options for. For the context of the site. So it isn't, it's an effort to provide clarity there.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the queue to speak to this amendment to the amendment, so I'll call a vote on the amendment to the amendment first. Uh clerks could queue that up. Councillor Dominado, councillor Dejana. Councillor Dominado, councillor Dejana, we just need you.
Be a hold of oh on the amendment, the amendment?
This the vote of the amendment uh to the amendment.
Okay.
Uh councillor Dominado. It's looking, oh, there's councillor Dominado, okay. Councillor Dominado, I see you there, but I need you to vote on this uh amendment to the amendment. Oh. I see uh now a yellow triangle for councillor, so we'll um. Have to wait for councillor Dominado to get back online because we're mid-vote. So I'll just ask the clerks to uh try to make that happen.
Yes, we will contact um councillor Dominado to see if we can help her along, maester it.
Okay, thank you.
Point of privilege, mayor?
Uh we're in the middle of a vote, so we can't really.
Just bringing uh clerk's attention to email, um Lisa's been asked to be marked as absent as her system is crashed. I'm sorry councillor Dominado.
On this vote, okay.
Um yeah, sent at nine oh five.
Okay, clerks, do you want to do that then? Our councillor Dominado is absent.
Yes, mayor.
It won't affect her ability, it won't affect her ability to vote on other matters though, uh because she has heard all the proceedings, so.
That is correct.
Council note. Yeah, okay, uh so um we're on the uh amendment queue one, this is now we're back to discussing. Uh the amended amendments and uh councillor Kirby Young, we have you on the queue. Uh did you want to say anything else to this one?
Not at this time, thanks mayor.
Okay, thanks. I don't have anybody else on the queue, so I will call a vote on this amended amendment.
What a privilege.
Yes, councillor Carr.
I don't have um, my voting screen doesn't enable me to vote.
Uh we have, I do see the votes.
Oh, I don't, I didn't, don't remember clicking it, but okay.
Privilege, that happened for me as well, mayor, I didn't.
Okay, 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 okay. Uh clerk, could you just, clerks, could you reset the vote?
Yes, mayor, we will um eliminate that one and reset it. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, please. It does seem some glitch that we.
I just recalled.
On a point of privilege, uh mayor, it's councillor Dominado.
Yes.
Um I'll take a vote assist in favor since I can't access my laptop at this time.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Dominado in in favor clerks. And um you still need votes from councillor Dejana, councillor Swanson, councillor.
Oh, I voted, it shows voted, but I'll vote again.
And councillor Dominado needs to be marked, there we go, in favor. And that has uh passed with none in opposition, so we're gonna go back to the main queue. Uh councillor Carr, did you have anything else?
Uh yes, thanks mayor. Um just wanted to make a few summary comments here in terms of the fact that. I think there was a lot of confusion in the public around the height increase and um people expressing opposition. Um to the uh height increase of this uh extra story as being a much larger height increase. So, you know, it it it's not at all staff's fault around that and it's just a change in measurement as uh the cut uh staff explained both in the report. And in my uh answer to my question raised uh at at the end of this debate. Um but uh but it's regrettable that there are people who felt that the building really um is much physically taller. Than it actually is with the addition of the story and the extra twenty units of social housing. Um, I certainly heard concerns around traffic and did raise those and put forward my amendment. Um to try and mitigate any of those, but I also want to just respond to the speakers and and thank all the speakers who came. Um to taking the time on on very, you know, very hot night. Um not necessarily tonight, but last night to to speak to this issue. Um that uh that really the expectation is that we are not gonna have the car congestion. Um moving forward as we also simultaneously move into the future. Um with a very strong climate emergency action plan and that is not only our plan, but absolutely essential. And those of us, you know, really experiencing how difficult um i- it is to cope with things like. Um extreme um hot weather events. No, our action is none too soon. We have to bring down. Uh greenhouse gas emissions, we have to reduce car um fossil fuel driven cars and and their emissions as fast as we possibly can. So I'm hopeful that those measures will also mitigate the the problems that how some of the speakers, many of the speakers. Um did raise. Um I also just wanted to say that um that uh like councillor Boyle. Uh I feel very strongly that um this whole whole project is one that uh is is a real. It's a, it it's exciting and it's a real model of how we want to move forward in terms of more complete. And resilient neighborhoods. Um so to, you know, to combine in addition to the community center that's there, the the school. The housing, the childcare um is just incredible. is just incredible. To include social housing in such a fabulous location with such fabulous services co-adjacent to it is exactly the way we should be heading in terms of equity. So I'm thrilled with the project. I love the fact that we have twenty extra units of social housing and thank staff for all their work on this. And the proponent, of course.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson up to five.
Yeah, so I love the idea of waterfront social housing. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about walkable communities. So here we have a community where you can walk to school, walk to childcare, walk to the community centre, bike to seawall to Stanley Park. As some of the speakers pointed out, we have three crises. We have a housing crisis and this project provides housing. We have a childcare crisis. This project provides childcare. We have a school crisis where people have to win a lottery to get their kid in the neighbourhood school. And this project provides a school. So for me, it's a win-win-win. And I'm just hoping we can increase the affordability of the housing with the land lease and/or get some senior government contributions. One speaker said taxpayers' money could be better spent, but I don't see how. This seems to me like a really good project.
Thank you councillor Swanson. Councillor Fry up next, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be voting in support of this project. And I do want to thank all the speakers who came to speak, whether in favor or in opposition. I appreciate that this is an emotional issue for folks who did come and speak in opposition. And, but I think in time, this project will prove to be such a tremendous asset to the community. I know myself, living in close proximity to a school, having children attending a school is just such a delight to have as a background noise, kids giggling and talking and just the activity around it. It's really actually something that I cherish. And I hope that the residents in the immediacy of this new school will grow to cherish this lovely addition to their neighbourhood. In one of the many living arrangements I had over my life in Vancouver, I briefly lived in a warehouse, a twelve hundred block of Pender, where Pender and Melville meet at Jervis in the mid nineteen nineties. And in fact, at that time, this was, I had a lovely view from my warehouse studio of Cole Harbour and the seaplanes taking off and stuff. Of course, that view is gone now because towers have since been built in front of it. So I can appreciate losing a nice view and concerns around that. But, you know, this was still at a time, basically, when Hastings Street still had, twelve hundred block Hastings had a gravel shoulder and a cliff off the side of it with brush and all sorts of stuff. So seeing that neighbourhood develop, and this has always been sort of part of the growth plan, it's taken a while to get us there, but it has been part of the plan. But I just want to reflect on one observation. When I was in this warehouse studio, and at the time, we were talking about expanding the Lionsgate Bridge and the cost that was going to be incurred to expand the Lionsgate Bridge. And every day at around three o'clock, I'd look out my window and Pender and Jervis, the lineup would start, the rush hour traffic lineup would start to get to West Vancouver filled with cars. And every single one of those cars, I kid you not, was a single occupant vehicle. And I think that's the elephant in the room. When we talk about this incredible amount of traffic and the impacts of traffic, we have to recognize that these are, there are practices in place here with single occupant vehicles choking up our streets, choking us with exhaust, creating a traffic nuisance really out of a sense of entitlement and convenience that, that I think as part of our response and our, you know, consideration of what we're going to do to manage the climate emergency, what we're going to do to manage climate and traffic and all these impacts on our communities and what we're going to prioritize. And I think that's the elephant in the room, is that a lot of this traffic doesn't need to be that way. If people were even carpooling, we would reduce that traffic significantly. And so that, to me, is part of the elephant in the room. We talk about the impacts of the traffic. I am grateful that we have amendments to this to actually thoughtfully consider how we're going to manage traffic for safety of kids going to the school. But that's also safety for the entire neighbourhood. And it's going to be, again, another happy side benefit of this project will be that I hope it will actually improve the street level interactions for everyone in Cole Harbour. So I'll be happy to support this and look forward to seeing the groundbreaking to replace this surface parking lot.
Thank you councillor Fry. Councillor Dominado, you're up next.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll start by saying thank you to all the speakers who came out and obviously spoke passionately from their different perspectives. And I think it is important to clarify in my comments that, again, and like councillor Carr, I do think there was some confusion around what was coming before council this week, particularly that it was not specifically the broad project of a social housing colocation of childcare in the school, that that has been decided, but that this was an amendment to increase the height by eight metres, increase the density slightly and to accommodate an additional twenty units of social housing. I do think that's important because I do think it caused some confusion. And these are lengthy documents that are provided to council and to the public. I do, and these were long planned, as many have commented, in terms of the school, the childcare and the co-location of social housing. I do want to comment on, bring a bit of a perspective from being a school trustee. As a school trustee, I was a liaison to the West End and downtown schools. And the subject of Cole Harbour was part of our deliberations when I was there at school board. And Cole Harbour and Olympic Village have been the top priorities for the VSB for a number of years. And this came to fruition, the reality of Cole Harbour, through what was addressed, the B.C. Hydro deal and the revenues generated from that. But this has been a top priority, not only for VSB but for the families in the neighbourhoods. And you heard that from families who came and spoke about the necessity of having a school, that the Lord Roberts, both the annex and the school itself are bursting at the seams. And then on the childcare front, we heard very clearly that we have a deficit and a shortfall of childcare spaces in this area and in this neighbourhood. And then on the housing component, I mean, we all know across council how critical it is, we're trying to create a diversity of housing in the city, also trying to address affordability and that this project does do that. One of the things that obviously came through and other colleagues have commented to us on the transportation concerns and the implications of increased traffic. But I also heard that from families who spoke, whose kids are going to school already in the neighbourhood, that they are by and large walking and cycling and using other modes of transportation. And I think what's really important in all of this is that I firmly believe that when you, as a city, we enable the colocation of services, that that will actually reduce the number of vehicles on our streets. It will give families and others more choices. And I think that's what we heard as well from residents who called in. So I actually don't think we're going to see a huge influx of traffic and vehicles. But what we're going to have is that families are going to be able to make different choices because they can, they have housing nearby, they work nearby, they have childcare nearby, and their school nearby. And I have spoken to many families across the city and the challenge has been for them, they often can't get into their catchment school or they can't find childcare in their neighbourhood. And they can't spend two hours a day on the bus going back and forth. And so this will give families more choices. And I do think it'll eliminate the use of vehicles. And I think I want to touch on one last point about, I heard from a resident who called in towards the end who lives in the neighbourhood and talked about the fact that the city created a livable downtown. Well, that was many councils ago, a really innovative and bold vision for having a livable downtown, not one where I've been to other cities where it's a ghost town. People go in for work and they leave and there's nothing left but office buildings. We should be proud that we've created a city that where people can live. And, but that is about having complete neighbourhoods. And that was something I campaigned on was walkable neighbourhoods. And so that people would have all the amenities they need. And so while I appreciate there were many concerns and from residents in nearby buildings, I think we have to look at the big picture of what this will present for both residents who are there now, but also future residents who want to stay and live in the city and not flee the city because they can't find affordable housing and can't find the amenities that they need to be close to home and work. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation and the proposal.
Thank you, councillor Dominado. That's it for speakers for this. Whoops, there's my puppy, sorry about that. And I think we can move to a vote.
A vote assist, since I can't access.
Sure, go ahead.
Online, in favor.
Okay, thank you councillor Dominado. Please mark councillor Dominado in favor. Great. Okay, council, that has passed unanimously. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Thank you, staff. Thanks to the clerks. And thanks to everybody who participated. Have a good few days away from our Zoom council. And we'll see you next week. So thanks, everybody, and enjoy your weekend.
Thanks very much. Bye, everyone.
Thanks, Gav, Mayor. Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.
I think we need to.
Happy Canada Day.
We do need a motion. Councillors, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay, that's right. Almost blew that one. Thanks very much. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Everybody.
Goodbye.